How come I can't hear you guys?
We'll start anyone. Good morning. Today is August 2nd, 2023. Time is now 9:02 a.m. I'm Kevin Day, Chair of the Custer County Board of Commissioners, and I will call to order this meeting of the B O C C. If you do have a cell phone, if you could silence them at this time, please. And if you would join me for the pledge.
I pledge the allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands.
One nation.
Invisible with liberty.
Liberty, justice for all.
Father, we've come before you this morning, Lord, and we just ask that as we come together to take care of the business of the county, we ask for your presence. We ask for your guidance, for your wisdom, your knowledge. We just ask that you would direct us as we take care of business. We just pray this Lord in Jesus' name.
Billy, could we get a roll call?
Me, Commissioner Day.
Present.
Commissioner Candace.
Here.
Commissioner Flower.
Present.
And clerk to the board, Kelly Catherine.
All right, and by the way, would you like to introduce yourselves?
Chloe Butler, I'm the airport manager.
Okay, yeah, I believe we have one or two online, so if anyone goes to speak later, if you could identify yourself for the record, please, that would be greatly appreciated. Okay. We have, do we have any amendments to the agenda?
No, sir. Not here.
Okay, then we have no minutes today. Commissioner items. Commissioner Candace.
Here.
Mr. Barr.
Uh, yeah, the only thing I really did after our meetings yesterday, I attended a Central Front Range Regional Transportation Study Meeting at 6 o'clock last night. Every five years, they have to go through a process to determine if the boundaries of their transportation regions are appropriate and relevant, so I said well, I, I would for the record, I contacted the Secretary of State's office. I was going to register my expenses connected to the upcoming election and you know, one of those booked who said that it's not required only on regular elections, he said he'd been a check to make sure, but he said, I don't think you have to report anything. So interesting to see. I also thought once you registered as a candidate, your account stayed current, and it's not being the Secretary of State's office deletes those after, he said you were between five and six months after election, maybe later, and I didn't realize that, so.
I don't know, I've been always getting something and
I have two every
Then the Washington is always answered.
So, but that was kind of great, but anyway. That's all I have.
Couple things here. Did either of you guys make it to the night out?
I did.
I did.
Sorry, forgot about that because I had never written down.
I was not able to though, because I did go to the Florence Party Forum meeting. Carol Winer and myself went to that, kind of hijacked their meeting for about 40 minutes again last night. I can't say, I can't say that it did, but I I can't say that it didn't. Very productive conversation again. We didn't get a reversal of their decision, but there are some on that board that are looking into other options. Because we're looking for anything that we might be able to do, whether it's them reversing their decision or
They don't want to take money from us to pay for some of this stuff.
Yeah, that is a possibility that that entered into the conversation, so we're exploring lots of different options and including there are some of them on the board that are going to be visiting with their lawyer to see if there is a possibility of splitting the ambulance out from the fire to where we could actually annex into that district in what I can do that. Yeah. It's kind of a lawyer question because they they had a question very similar to what the hospital district did up here, so that is, that's an issue on that, so productive night, but I don't know, you know, how productive or anything like that, but we're still still working, still trying to move forward on that. And since you mentioned the highway, do we have any input on anything on the highway project here on Highway 96? Input? Yes, and I'll, I'll explain here and then we can the only thing I have noticed, I think the paving job they're doing is great, and it's coming out good. But going down through the hardscrabble, and I'm looking at it from with my Whitmore fire hat on and the response to all the motorcycle accidents in the corners.
Looks slick then.
Well, the bank the road surface itself is good, but then when they they bank it down to towards the guardrails, that's a sharp break for about six or seven foot there. So if you've got somebody that swings a little wide there, that's where you're going to collect all your sand anyway, which gives them problems.
True.
But that break in and of itself is pretty sharp. I drove over it with my truck the other day, and you could really feel that jerk you towards the guard. I I personally think that if we have any input, that we should be able to talk to them to have them go ahead and raise that outside shoulder as a safety issue.
Should have done that anyway.
The whole road surface is for about a foot outside of the white line, 18 inches, but then when they carried that oil on out to the guardrail, it's a pretty good, pretty good bank towards the guardrail.
On the other side of the white line?
Yeah. So if you're in your lane, that's not an issue, but if you end up in the guardrail anyway, you're already and we do have issues through there, that's that's just something I wanted to bring up, because I don't know, and I guess I address my question to you because you're on the transportation board and stuff.
Yeah, we don't, we certainly are welcome to reach out to and share our concern with them. I'm sure it's after the fact, so not much is going to occur, and we wouldn't agree on about it before it back, right? So you're thinking they should have carried that asphalt at least level or sloped it up towards the guardrails.
Yeah, I would say they could change that slope a little bit, crown a little bit, but it's a very sharp change in angle right now, and I know before they release that road, they have to inspect it and stuff, but that may not be something they actually look for. I'm looking at the first responder mainly to the motorcycle wrecks in that area. Well, I don't know if you would know who the contact can be for that.
History, yeah.
Because I would be willing to talk with them.
Just checking to see when our next T P R meeting is, and it's September. I can get you a name.
If you don't mind, if you could give that to me, and I would be I would want to reach out to them just to bring it to their attention, and like you say, there may or may not be anything that would come of that. The sooner we bring it to their attention, the better.
Yeah, if they're ever going to do anything, it'd be easy to do it now.
Yeah. And that's all I have. Do you have anything for us today? Right. That would take us to public comment. If anybody has any public comment they'd like to make. I don't see anything in here. I believe that Deb Adams has her hand up.
Good morning, gentlemen. I just want to congratulate Brayden, and I want to commend Kevin and Tom for the civil and responsible way that you handled the issue. I personally believe you did pick the best person for the job, and Brayden will continue to be a positive asset in the county despite whatever the Sentinel headline will rant in its next issue. Thank you, and Kevin, keep on doing a great job with your leadership.
Thank you, Deb.
May I?
You may.
Deb, just for the record, we have not made a decision on the county manager position. We just announced the finalists. That decision we made August 16th.
Okay, I understand that, but I'm still going to stand behind that Brayden is a very good candidate for the position. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'm not seeing anybody else with a hand up. Okay. Staff reports. Was, did any, I did not hear from Rich that he was not going to be here. That was not one of them that you knew of, Kelly?
No.
So I have a suggestion, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I think we've done our due diligence to schedule these staff reports. Highly frustrated that apparently people just randomly decide whether or not they're going to be here, or they don't even give it a thought, or
To get in.
Whatever. Yeah, we, we've got, you've got that. We you know, I don't have a problem with them sending a report ahead of time. That way, if they can't make it or they're not here, we can look at their report and move on.
Well, we had told some offices that they, if they sent their report, they did not have to be here.
And I'm perfectly fine with that, so.
The sheriff's office was still going to be an intervention.
So, I'd say let's move on to if they're not here on that time or relatively close to it. Just happened to be the sheriff was the first this year. It didn't matter to me who it was, but I'm sure I'm really thrilled about the times either because if somebody sends in a report, we're not going to spend 15 minutes going over it.
Yeah, and we're still need to know some of that, so. I think I will send him a message anyway. I think I will send him a message anyway in case something has come up.
I, uh, had a citizen call that has a, the, uh, need for the sheriff and I sent him the note.
So I will send him that and, uh, and then we will move on.
In that vein, you know, Clyde's here, I wouldn't have a problem with. Hearing that report. It's gonna goof up our schedule as we move along, but.
Not necessarily, cause nobody's here.
Well, but he's scheduled to be, uh, on it.
It will, it'll catch it up.
So if somebody said, well, I'm gonna go at ten thirty to hear the airport report. Can't imagine that happening, but it could, so.
Not that you're not important.
If somebody's here, if somebody's here in person, I think they should take priority or.
Well, if you'd like to come up, sir, let's go ahead and, uh, get our airport report. And you did not send anything prior to, correct?
My name's Clyde, but we're not the airport manager. And the first thing I have is a question.
Yeah, I had a question for the sheriff.
I have a text out to him to see if, uh, he is coming. Uh, I haven't received anything back yet, so. Uh, we have gone ahead and went through a new report and we'll pick him up when he, when he gets here.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, my first question is, would you guys prefer to have staff reports by email or in person?
And I believe the airport was one of the ones that we were still doing in person.
You got some information that's good for us to hear, um, that it might get to be where. It's routine.
My, my preference on all of the staff reports is to have them in person, however, there is a conflict. From me as a commissioner, I'm certainly. Willing to look at a written report as well. Just for the airport, but every staff report we have, my preference is in person, but it can't always happen.
Okay, well, I'll go ahead and, uh, try to attend every time and. Okay, so my report's pretty short and simple. Uh, fuel sales for the month of July twenty twenty-three, we sold five hundred and sixty-two gallons, which is. A little over twice what we sold last month. And we had a revenue from those sales of three thousand, uh, six dollars and eighty-six cents. We didn't buy any fuel or have any fuel delivered in July. And we have forty-three hundred and two gallons in stock.
It's double.
Yeah, it's a little over double. Oh, and I, I believe. In my opinion, it's mostly because the price went down to what we're compatible, compatible now.
Yeah, it is.
The only other, uh. Only other airport in the vicinity that's matched our prices, Dreamont.
Not even Walsenburg?
Walsenburg is still a little bit higher.
I have a question, Mr. Chair, is that mine? Is the airport board handling the hangar leases currently?
Yes, this is tomorrow morning's way.
We talked to J C a little about that the other day. And my understanding is that. The board's intention is to get all of the hangar leases on an annual basis. I thought I heard due in January and.
That's right.
I also believe I heard that hasn't happened yet, and that's the target.
I think that's true. Uh, the responsibility. For the administration of the lease contracts though, has been given to Ludi Mora, your secretary. And, uh, she's probably the person who would be.
But, and I, and I'm aware of this, it's no longer planning and zoning or any outside activities for airport board handling.
That's what I've been told, yes.
I had somebody ask me the other day. Do the county commissioners really care how many gallons of fuel the airport has? I don't know. I, I guess it doesn't matter to me. It's historically that there's always what the information came from the airport board.
Yeah, I don't think we care about the actual gallons. We care about whether.
I think. Yeah, I, I was gonna say, I think, this is just me. We can, you certainly can give whatever report you need. As commissioner. I would be more interested in hearing the revenue. Uh, generated from the airport board. Not that it's all about money. That's not the airport's job, generate, generate revenue, but. Uh, there's other things I'd like to probably hear about the airport rather than how many gallons of fuel were. Sold or bought or have on hand. I'm not being negative. I just think from a high level. Doesn't matter to me. That's, that's an internal thing.
Yeah, I agree. It's, uh, it, we care about how the new tanks come along. We care about how grand expansion is. Or hangars being rented.
Or new, new board members coming on, new officers.
Issues with equipment, that kind of stuff.
But, you know, and we've always heard it every five and a half years that I've been a commissioner. We have heard the exact down to the tenth gallon about fueling.
You know, I think that came out back when they first started selling out fuel out there, cause it used to be just dirt strip. And with no fuel and it got to be sort of an oil strip with, with a little bit of fuel and then the fuel tank was small, so they started tracking. Because they had to catch the trucks coming and going and getting the best price or that was an issue, but it's not.
Yeah, you know, I, I think if. If the manager said, oh, by the way, we, we got, uh, a load of fuel in last week, that's fine. I don't know.
Well, yeah, before we, there was more. Prudent before because we weren't ahead of the curve on buying the load of fuel and so. With the knowledge of how much fuel was left and we kinda knew when. That expenditure was coming in, uh, but now that we have. Taking care of that on the front end.
It's just an issue of, but for some reason, sales fall off because of whatever others passed them.
Yeah, for some reasons, it, this happened, I would expect to hear about it. We sold that, so we had no fuel last month because this happened or whatever. I think that's relevant.
So, uh, the chairman of the board is on vacation and the board is meeting the weekend, so I'll bring it up at the board. And the other issue we have is, uh, we had a couple. City, a citizen worrying about. Who went and leases for an emergency thing. He was trying to do something outside the airport. And he wanted the names and addresses of everybody. That's. Not happening. So issue like that, that there, there'll be discussion, see where that stands. That if we have to get the attorney involved, uh, shutting down or helping them understand what our rules are.
Yeah, there may, uh, again, I'm not trying to be critical. I just. Thinking about that when somebody said they were listening to me, they said, you guys really care how many gallons you want? You just hear it, so.
The only reason I'm reporting that is because, uh.
That's the form you have.
And I'm just continuing what was reported on my.
Yeah, I, I agree with Chris Canada. I think. If and when there are other things going on, you know, and. I'd like to hear about the plans for the air fast and, you know, those kind of things that are. That are gonna affect what I'm calling community alarm. It's also a good platform. To get the airport in front of the community. Now, we don't have very many people on stage. But, uh, Lynn LaGrue and I talked about that numerous times, about, uh, staff reports, I think are important because it gives an opportunity. For an organization or a board or committee to get.
I agree. Well, uh, the plans for the airfest are moving forward pretty well and we're expecting a pretty good turnout this year, but. Be surprised if it doesn't exceed last year.
Unless you get bad weather.
Unless we get bad weather.
Day in is, uh, twelfth of August, twelve.
It's coming up.
Well, and we have quite a few vendors signed up this year, but that's new.
And the times on that? The times on that?
It's like seven thirty.
Yeah, seven thirty, and it just, I'm sure the vendors will stay as long as they're selling anything.
And you have enough help cooking with them.
We have plenty of volunteers at the moment, yes.
Same band?
I, I don't remember the name of the band last year, but there were three bands signed up. Along the lines, you were talking about, Mr. Flower, all the equipment currently is working fine. We have no. County-owned equipment that needs to be maintenance. They have the air conditioner on the tractor, but that's not a big deal to me.
I have a question on that, Clyde, cause Vince was gonna send. Changed hands out there, but some, somebody to show you guys how to set up them push home. And, and also the, uh, front end.
Uh, just give steer.
Yeah, you haven't done that yet, cause you've been awful busy.
Uh, no, he did that. Yeah, I can't remember the exact date, but it was in late June, early July.
Now you know.
He came out and showed me how to do everything.
Yeah, good. Yeah, he did a good job of leveling out that parking spot.
Well, again, I hope you. Took my comments in the spirit they were intended, absolutely.
Well, absolutely. I'm, I knew at this, I don't know what you guys need.
All right, sir. Well, I think my question, so.
I did, I was gonna bring it up soon, we're done here. You got a couple of other things I'd like to mention, since I'm here and I've got it written down already. On the twenty-sixth of July, the FAA came out and inspected and recertified, did the annual inspection and recertification of our A W O S system. It's working good. Uh, we're waiting for a component that has to go in it in order to be able to put that data online. Right now. You can get it from the website, the airport's website or. The radio and that's it.
So, Fort Flight's not picking it up or?
Fort Flight is not picking it up. We're missing a component that we evidently didn't get when we first got the system. And I've talked to two other technicians and one of them says, we can get, we can do it without that, but we've gotta have the, uh. But it has its own individual mode of wifi, uh, not wifi, but internet modem. That has to be replaced because evidently. We had a lighting storm a while back and it got fried.
So they, they owe it to us?
Yes, it's supposed to be in, in the mail.
Trust me.
Okay, so the, uh, A W O S has been recertified. Uh, Armstrong in engineering, Heather Tom called yesterday. And wanted to report to me. That the company asphalt pavement maintenance services that have been contracted to do our, uh, crack seal. Has been completely unresponsive. And emails, they're not answering emails. They don't answer my phone calls either.
I had a meeting with them, uh, a month ago.
Did you?
Yeah.
You did?
I, I, in slide, I talked to them. They said they wanted to do it in fall. Before, you know, that was the best time, but that's the last I got. I said, um, I asked Brian to get ahold of them just to confirm a date. They're probably not talking to Armstrong.
Uh, Brian gave me a phone number and asked me to call them too, and I have been calling and they haven't been returning my calls.
I'll look into that. I gotta go back a little.
Anyway, I was gonna mention that this one.
But they are, they told me they had it on the schedule of the planet before the frost hits. That's the best time. It's open and, correct, you know, to, to do it. They like that. It's so that.
Yeah, we got.
Push the bumps up in the summertime as opposed to opening the cracks and making them leak.
We've gotta get it sealed before, uh, we start getting freezing weather. Uh, I was gonna report the board would be talking about that at the next, it's in the agenda for the airport board at the next meeting. On the twenty-seventh of July, we had two engineers visiting us from Asphalt Systems Incorporated, the company that did the overlay. They wanted to inspect the runway and the ramp and everything that they overlaid and they're very happy with the way it's holding up. Seems to be a good product.
Yeah, it looks like.
Well, are there any other questions I could answer for you guys?
Probably I would respond because you had. Talked to me the other day on, uh, the website.
Yes, oh, yes.
So, and I don't know if that's on your guys' agenda or not, and, uh. So, from. I T basically, the. Yeah, two issues, I think. One of them was that the old website was popping back up. I believe that has been wrecked.
That has been wrecked apart.
The other issue was. That it was only available on the county website. You had to go to us to get to yours. And I believe that the, the way, the only way to really rectify that would be for the airport to go and get their own website. Well, aside from the county.
I thought that was probably true also, but it's not. In fact, I, now if you check it. Through the aviation sources that everybody uses like AvWeb. Or Air Nav or, uh. Even Fort Flight, you're getting a new website.
Because they didn't do anything different.
Maybe they did.
Some, something changed. That's all I know. Something changed because now if you, if you Google it. You get the new website where before you would get the old website.
So maybe it was, uh, that the old website started jumping back in there. It may have been the issue all along. So, uh, well, good, that's good to hear.
That's good news.
So.
So right now that, um. I'd like to see a few changes down the road, but right now I'm pretty happy with the website.
That's all I would have.
Yeah, yeah.
Thanks, sir. I appreciate it. I appreciate it.
Good luck with the airfest. I wanted to tell you, my God, uh, I am previously committed to be out of town that Thursday. So I will not be there.
Thank you.
See you, Clyde.
And I did receive a response from the sheriff and he has. Another commitment he has to attend to, so, uh, he will not be here today. He asked if he could, uh. Give his report at the next meeting, so.
Can I speak to Mr. Tony?
Yes.
Mr. Clyde, are you still on?
You're muted, sir.
Okay, can you guys hear me?
Got you now.
Hi, good morning, you guys, uh. The only thing I have for the, the only thing I have for the sheriff is I, uh, we had a problem up here in the southern area of the Sentinel Ranch. Uh, back in Janu-, uh, July twenty-first, up on Brittany Road, uh, and we had conflicting, uh. Stories coming in from the deputies that either came out here, uh, one deputy actually called me back. Uh, with a, uh, you know, with his advice and, and story, and also we had a member go down to the sheriff's department office. And got another conflicting story. So I emailed. The sheriff on the, uh, the website on his, uh, email site two times and never got a response. Uh, I would just like to know what was going. Uh, I would just like to know what was going on because uh, I mean, everybody's not really in fear up here because, you know, but we're all. We're all packing heat and uh, we don't wanna, you know, jeopardize somebody else's life because. You know, of somebody stupidity, you know, somebody not getting back with us on the uh, uh, you know, on the, on the proper wording, what was going on and everything. So that, that's what I was gonna ask him.
Uh, this is Commissioner Flower. Uh, I was gonna come up with an email address here for the sheriff to make sure you were. Contacting the right one, right one, give me just a second, cause I get a couple of different ones, um. I'm assuming that is.
They are still on the old format?
Uh, L Smith at Custer Sheriff dot com. Is that the email you have?
I'm looking right now, the one I have, well, it's, it comes up on the website, says get in touch. Do you have a specific, specific question uh, or concern, and I fill out. Uh, you know, fill in the blanks basically and ask my question.
Alright.
So that's the one I utilized.
Hey, you might send a direct email to Sheriff Smith at L Smith. At Custer Sheriff dot com, yeah.
Okay, L, L Smith at.
Custer Sheriff dot com.
Custer Sheriff dot com, yeah, the one that actually. Is the one that I utilized, like I said, it's an online one, it says rich at richsmithsheriff dot com.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know anything about that, uh.
I'm sorry, that's the one that's on the website.
Alright.
He may have too.
So that may be part of the issue, but I think you're exactly right, this is a, an issue to, to follow up with Sheriff Smith.
Okay, so, um, am I to assume that I'm just gonna contact him again by email, that I knew email I just said you gave me?
That's what I would recommend.
Do that first, uh, and then uh, I'm, I'm sure whoever talks to him will probably bring it up, whether it's Tom, me, or Kevin, some, some. He'll, he'll check in one of us here and then.
We'll also let him know that you're trying to reach him.
I appreciate it, Commissioner, thank you very much, I'm gonna go back on mute.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, uh.
I remember who the other one is, it won't be here till next week.
Okay. Thank you.
It's not Brian.
Brian's here, so I think we'll uh, jump back to uh, finance and H R.
Be sure.
So, I'll run through this pretty quickly, I don't think there's anything too noteworthy here with finances, budget versus actual report. Um, that's what's attached here, at least the summary sheet. Um, right now, we should be at fifty eight point three three percent. Uh, if, every month being equal, and we're, we're doing pretty well across the board there. Higher on revenues and lower on expenses, uh, with the exception of, of a couple areas which we know about.
No changes since our review or not?
Well, just, this includes July, so.
Is it surprising?
No, nothing surprising there, so I think we have, um, that was a good. Good review and I'm glad that we were able to get, um, department heads in to speak to that. For, for those notes as we continue to, to build what that process looks like, so. Um, moving on from there, budget amendments and resolutions, there's been several that have kinda come up, especially here recently, so. I'm working on those and we'll have some resolutions here, either at the mid-month meeting or certainly by the end of the month.
What a question about that, yeah. Uh, for all of us. What if we don't support a budget revenue or amendment?
Then it doesn't happen.
Um, and are these truly, purely, should these budget amendments and resolutions occur? Before the fact or after the fact?
It would be my financial opinion that it occurs before the fact. I think for it to happen after the fact shows some miscalculation on someone's part, over that might be.
Sometimes they're unavoidable.
Sometimes they are unavoidable, so. We need to.
Or I was thinking, or if nothing else, certainly a lack of communication, right? Uh, I don't know. I couldn't imagine something arising that a department would overexpend their budget without talking to you first. And I would assume if it's unavoidable, you would deal with that, but if it's avoidable. I would assume you would also say, well, you better hold off till you get authority from the commissioners to the budget amendment, right? Right, and it would not be how the process would work.
Or you get a grant or you get a, some income coming in, he, he wants to have a resolution just to put it in.
Sure, I, I was saying on the expense side there, but.
Yeah, I think a perfect example, and I'll pick on him since he's here, um, was Brian and coming to us with the scraper. That's exactly how it should happen, is, hey, I, I have this need that wasn't expected, this is what it's going to do. We write up the resolution, we bring it forward and there you go.
Yeah, because if it would've gone the other way around, right?
Right.
He'd contracted that scraper. Either with a contract or, or whatever. Really operating outside, in this case, because he's here, he would be operating outside of his authority.
That would be my suggestion, is, is how, if at all possible, that's exactly how it should happen.
And, and I get on the revenue side, right? You may not know you're gonna get a grant, you may know you've applied for it, but they might, you might not know until they say, hey, you've been awarded some grant. Uh, but the expense side to me is a little more controllable than that.
Yeah, and then when we throw the two together, it gets even a little bit more rocky because. You know, we, we technically wouldn't want to expend anything without knowing that a grant was in place or something along those lines. Yeah.
Uh, but things happen, shoot an accident, the sheriff rolls a car and needs a new car and something happens. You gotta do it, and things go on, and we do it at real time or we do it in a rear.
Yeah, my, my only suggestion there would be in that case is that, um. That they would come forward and say, this happened, we need a new vehicle, not buy a vehicle first, I think that's the right.
Right.
Not that he's done anything like that.
As an example, but there, there are cases where you'd have to react immediately, possibly.
Right.
Yeah, I just don't.
But not normal.
I can't imagine anybody expending money outside of their budget without having approval first.
Yeah, so, a- and the ones that are coming forward, those are, for the most part, things that have, either that I brought up in the, the quarter, the, the second quarter report. Such as just a mis- one that was just a flat-out mistake, um, with, with Custer County Kids Council where we doubled the numbers. And it was just an error, uh, miscommunication there, um, to just things that have come up on the board here. Things that we wanna move around or change and that was, that were decided here before the, right, the resolution even came about, so. Any other questions on finance?
Yes. You and I talked about it before. We. We voted actually to commit L A T C F dollars to certain entities. Uh, I'm still. I don't wanna say concerned, I still have a question for you of whether those dollars have been transferred to those accounts or not.
Right.
And, and if not, which I don't think they have, last time we talked. Can we make that happen?
Yeah, a- and that's exactly right, um, it has not happened yet, that's one of the resolutions that needs to happen. To, for the various departments, um. And I guess it would be good to maybe review exactly what those, those numbers are, um.
It's part of the resolution.
Right, we'll, we'll put those numbers in, um, to make sure that that's, um. That at least the information that I have as far as those numbers go is correct.
So, right now that L A T C F money's in general fund?
Correct.
And so any ex- expenses. Committed towards those dollars have been coming out of general fund.
Uh, they have been coming out of the general fund, yes.
And they've been being used.
But they have been, yes, like, re- recycling, for example, has had, has expended some of their L A T C F monies. We haven't done the resolution to move that revenue from the general funds, just. Overall general fund revenue to recycling revenue, but we have been tracking specifically recycling expenses. For L A T C F specifically, yeah.
So, is that the only one?
It's the only one that comes to mind, I don't. I can't think of others that have used about the top of my head.
Uh.
Do they know? I don't know. I don't know if.
If we allocate, how, when did we do that, it's been a while.
Yeah.
Probably, year of last year, we got the money in May, so it would've been. I don't remember, but.
It was after budget cycle, cause otherwise we would've done that, both in budget.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, but.
The allocation, so is it?
Somewhere in between.
Good point.
So, that's a good point, you gotta follow up on what we do.
Yeah.
So if.
That's your job, I mean, finance.
Yeah.
And, and I guess the minutes of the meetings know it, but how else can they word it out?
Well, I, I guess I would hope the point of contacts would reach out to, to their points and let them know that you guys decided as a board for that.
Uh, I think I was, personally, I was looking at you, you're the finance guy, we said, give them that money.
Yeah.
I mean, that's logically.
Okay, yeah, and I'd be happy to do that, that was just a miss.
Yeah, we never.
Yeah, we didn't say. It was, you're, put it in there, give them the money, but they gotta know they got a plus up in their budget, right, or something.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, so for recycling, for example, I know they've expended some of that. So when that transfer happens, it's not gonna be that figure that we voted on. It'll be that figure minus any expenses that they have debited out of that.
No, it will be that full figure, so it, it will be, um, just easy numbers. If there's hundred thousand dollars in L A T C F that's just in the general fund. And fifty of that's supposed to go to recycling, then all fifty of that will get transferred from there to recycling revenue. And the expenses have already been.
Got you, okay.
So some of them don't know they had a plus up.
If I could speak to that problem, because at that time we had an admin and she was in contact with all of those people. So I don't believe there's anyone out there that doesn't know that they were awarded those monies. If they had the application in for it and they had not heard. For some reason, I would say they should've reached out to us as well, so, uh, if I had. Fifty thousand dollars that I was looking for and I didn't hear, hey, you got it or you didn't get it. It's incumbent on myself then to say, hey, where's my money, or did I give it or not? But I believe that the admin at that point was in contact with everyone. So, because I think that's where that would've fell, not to the finance department, he's responsible for making sure the money goes where it went.
Right.
But, but for the point of clarification, see, there wasn't any applications for the L A T C F money that we dispersed.
Okay.
That arc of money, yes.
Okay.
We just did it because they, they had a need, there weren't a.
Right.
That's right.
I know, I know the attainable housing as well, where they're not.
But the fact is, they were notified they had it, so it goes both ways, he, he, he should've, could've. Put it in the cap, then I want it once we approved it, and should've moved it.
Could've.
Yeah, or, or, sorry. Brian had a question, we were commenting.
Well, I don't know if any of that went to landfill. But if it did, I don't know that it did.
Okay.
I mean, I don't know if it did or not, but. Just to bring up a point that.
Right.
You know.
Maybe you didn't get.
I, I don't know if there was any obligation to the.
I'm just, I'm just kidding, I think there was, cause you had a. Over problem at the time.
Well, I'm, I'm the one that promoted it because of the well.
Oh, correct.
That's right.
Uh, but give me just a second. Yeah, we had. We had agreed to allocate dollars to landfill. I hesitate to give that amount because we may have only. Cause we only got half of our funding for L A T C F, so we may have only allocated half of.
At that time.
Committed, allocated half of what we committed, so I'm not sure about that, I checked the minutes, but. Uh, I do remember, um. Recommended the board and we voted on it.
Yeah, we did.
Uh, because, so we had a reserve amount to deal with that well, specifically was one of the things.
Yeah, so a lot of that was, we had certain items that were fully funded at the front and others that were. Put to the, after the second correction.
Yeah.
Yeah. So I'd have to go back through the minutes to figure that out exactly.
I asked Jennifer, sent us the list.
And, and I do have that list, I don't have it in front of me, but, um. So I'll, I'll make sure that that gets done, but that's, that's one of the resolutions that needs to happen and. One that I was trying to figure out how we needed to work it exactly, and so I apologize if it's taken this long to, to get it allocated correctly.
And I think that information's on her old computer.
I mean, she, uh, it, it was, but they went back and somehow resurrected her list for certain things, phones and other things. I don't know if they got the email back. Cause I asked them. For other, other reasons, phone numbers and other things that she had.
And every time I'm aware of recycling, expending some of those dollars, I keep thinking. But it's just coming out of general fund right now, earmarked as.
Right, and really, this, this isn't an issue, i- it's just, just cleaning up the books is what it comes down to. We know, we know what's supposed to be extended and.
As far as we know, that's the only one fund that may have. If they needed the money, was using it.
Right.
And could've gone into the red if they didn't have it.
Yeah.
If it were really fenced, it's not, it's in the general fund.
Right.
Yeah, good, good, thank you.
Other finance questions? Move on to insurance, and there's been no change since last month. Still, we're at the same amounts there, workers comp, we have five open claims and then we have four open cap claims as well. Moving on to human resources, um, you'll notice that our current number of employees has bumped, uh, a substantial amount. And that's because of the election, and so we have thirty six part-time, which includes temporary employees at this point. I would like to get that separated out, um. Like our handbook is now separated, where we have full-time, part-time, and then temporary employees. I think that'll help us have a better handle on the type of employees we actually have working for us, so. But for now, that's, that's how we have it set up in our books, and so we have a, a current number of a hundred and ten employees for the county. Uh, seventy-four that are full-time, thirty-six that are part-time, including those temporary.
Can you tell us how many of those temporary from the election?
That, I believe that's. I have to look at my last. Well, yeah. They're double digits, so, um, I can get that answered for you though.
Okay.
And number hired this month really is only two, because, um, most of those in elections employees were. Somebody that we have in the system and then that we just reactivate them, so, um. The, but the full-time, we have, full-time, we have Haley Lemons, uh, for the clerk's office. And Tricia Montgomery for the clerk's office. Well, I believe Lemons is not.
No.
Right, now it is riddle, alright, so she just got married this, last week.
R I D D.
Okay, and is that how she spells her first name? I didn't think it would. Is it? I didn't think of the spell that way, so, that's cool.
I always try to throw a Y in there.
So, big welcome to them and, and uh, be sad to see the, the two. On the uh, terminated side for that next month, but. Um, but as far as this last month goes, there were no other terminations, and we had two open investigations.
So. A matter of semantics, I guess, but. Is the word termination. To me, that's an employer. Activated action.
Right.
If somebody retires or leaves willingly, do we consider those terminations or are there separations?
I, I believe the overall term. I, I believe the overall term is terminated, whether it's resigned. Yeah, it, it isn't the softest. Right. So um. And if it would be helpful to know that, we, we could certainly. Report it that way.
If this number said three terminated, means we terminated three people. That's different to me than a separation from employment.
But that's true, though. The county has to terminate them. Cease work. Actively handle.
Yeah, happy to. To change that, to make it a little softer, add that information.
And when I do have a question on this resource over here, Mr. Chairman. Would you be willing to notify? The county system, all employees of the county when we have a new hire. Did you send out an email that everybody said, hey, wanna welcome Dominic Edgington as our new? I just find it very awkward when somebody said, oh, did you know that so-and-so is working for the county? Nope. Had no idea. I don't know who this Deb person was in public health yesterday. Apparently she worked for us. Well, I just think that's bizarre.
You mean the new nurse?
No, or the uh, not Sarah Deb. I think it's bizarre that, that the county commissioners wouldn't have a clue and have to hear it on the street when there's. Somebody came to work for the county. I get it if it's for an elected official, might maybe none of our business, but certainly if it's a non-elected official, one of our department heads, it'd be nice to know.
It is nice, but if we're, if we were a big county, the commissioner can't know everybody. We're small enough to manage.
I know. Byrley raised hell with me. He said, why can't you guys get organized to let all of us know when we have a new employee in the county so we can. Reach out to him and welcome him and this and that. And, you know, particularly with Kelly Pope coming on and Dominic Boe, I thought, well. Yeah, be nice. To get an email from humans. Resources to say, please welcome so-and-so.
One of the things I need to work with I T on is, is really making sure that that contact list is created that way. When we get a new employee, we can, we can send that to them and that's automatically added to an all. Customer county email. I know we've, we've started that, but um, there've been kind of some glitches in the app that I haven't had a chance to talk with them about. So that's been my hesitation, um, and this was kind of the, the next step in that direction, but I will work. To make sure that that happens. Other questions? Last couple of things real quick is that the auditors are in all week tomorrow and we will be um, using this building. Because of the elections, uh, we, we're not able to use the basement, so. Yeah, well, I'll. Put up a couple of tables and we'll be good to go there. And so um, just so you're aware that, that you're wanting some, some peace and quiet. That uh, they'll be sharing it with the auditors in here.
This is not an office, yeah. With their eyes.
This would be available for them.
Yep, exactly.
So starting tomorrow and they'll be here for a week.
Starting uh, Monday. Sorry, I did not. All week tomorrow, all next week. The right English there.
All week tomorrow is it? Sometimes a day feels. Next week tomorrow.
So we should probably try to avoid this. Me and you are trying to have a conversation with the auditors. The only thing I've got on schedule, we're meeting, that's, I think that's happening in the basement, so. We need to be out of here next week, basically that. Recycling's meeting in the basement on Thursday.
Uh, yeah, we can't. We'll have to change that.
On the tenth is when they're scheduled.
Not tomorrow.
So, and last thing is that the move, this is a movement, so we've got a lot of the offices moved, at least in part. Uh, but every office has been moved, at least in part at this point. And we had our first uh, breakfast.
And all the copiers and everything are hooked up in there and functioning, as far as you know?
Yes, a- as far as I know, over on that side. I, I do believe that there's still some technical difficulties upstairs. I don't know to what extent.
I know the big, big plotter's gotta go up there to get what we're working on. Did your copier go from your office in? I saw one in there, but I didn't know it was yours. So I'll bet that quieted your office down, huh? Oh, then you won't have to deal with.
Well, Betty's gonna put a reader on her door. If you have to have a tax notice.
Alright, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Okay, and you are here.
Good morning. How are you?
Yeah, that, that changed your traffic pattern big time with that copier not being in there.
Yeah, I put in seven thousand steps yesterday.
Then I think she gets longer now that the top beard is out either. People don't. Across the street, well.
This is Mays.
And I'm assuming Dave's gonna move the mailboxes for you.
No, I don't think, I, I asked Matt too. I don't know if.
So they're probably anchored into.
So on the maze, um, we had an issue with it. And I did talk to C I C and they said they don't know what happened. But I have the correct one and I in fact went back to January of this year and confirmed that the ending balance was the beginning balance of the next month. So it's good. No, that, the lady I got ahold of. It's a big corporation, so then the one person doesn't go to look unless they spend the time to go look for it and they weren't. It looks better than what the other.
And as far as you know. Contingency fund has not changed in several years.
Right, it's been long, long, long in several years. Long time.
And. Commissioners. I don't mean sound arrogant here. Commissioners are the one that can authorize expenditures out of that.
That is, uh, you talked to Sam about that. It's restricted money and I don't know what you use it for yet.
Self-insurance is coming around.
It's looking better.
But that's.
Yeah.
I would entertain a motion.
I would move to accept the May. Children's report. Or the children's report for the month of May.
I have a motion on the floor to accept the treasurer's report for the month of May. Those in favor? Those, I, those opposed? Almost abstained there. Motion carried.
Yeah, and I want to sleep.
I was anticipating a signature on that.
Maybe there's something in the air over here, huh? Cuz I, I didn't admit it, but it happened to me yesterday as well during the, they don't think. For some reason, I just, and I kind of come back and I thought.
Well, it looks like it worked this time, but you started with what we had. It looks okay.
I checked it clear back from January and went forward, so.
It had the same number.
I'm assuming this. Time of year, the miscellaneous collections on the general fund, the line share of that is still property tax coming in?
The whole, collection holdings, down at the bottom is the tax where the taxes go.
Okay.
It does not go into general.
Okay, so then.
It's divided.
Eight hundred and twenty-three thousand miscellaneous collections on the very first slide for general fund.
So general fund, the current collection is two hundred and thirteen thousand?
Two hundred and thirteen.
And then I was questioning the miscellaneous collection column in the middle.
Yeah, that's just stuff that we collected that goes into county general. That's not taxes.
That's not taxes. That's what I was wondering. Yeah, it's taxes or that stuff, like LA stuff from.
If they got a grant or whatever. That's what that is.
For Brian finding some gold out there in the landfill, bringing it in.
Oh, Bill would take care of that.
I move we accept the June report. Treasurer's report.
I have a motion on the floor to accept the treasurer's report for the month of June. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
So we need, oh, specifically. Thank you, man. Have a good day.
Before, I know we have a report from C S U that we, him sitting here patiently waiting for.
Is Reggie around?
Oh, she's in the.
Oh, that's right, she is back.
Good morning. Thank you for waiting.
I was, I had to come to town anyways, so that's not a big deal.
Well, I thought you were wanting to observe county commissioners so that I could consider maybe running.
He's observed that and he made it.
We'll see. Uh, no, I don't have much, you know, uh, we got that budget resolution. Approved, so I'll make sure, I'll get with Braden, make sure that it's actually been transferred.
I have a question for you about that. I almost asked it. When we did that resolution, what about the labor connected to that?
I can talk with Braden. We have contract labor, I have the budget, I have for budget for contract labor. And so I don't know if when Rusty. Cuz, well, I just postponed time in time clock bus. So I don't know if they, if they transfer that from contract labor or how that works, but. Yeah, I think so, but I can, don't check.
Cuz I wondered if we should include labor as part of the.
I don't know, yeah. I didn't, I didn't think about.
All we did was just the lease payment.
That's it, yeah, right, correct, yeah.
But your field budget is what it is and if you need more and.
Yeah, I, I don't know where we're at right now. I know we're not, I, I know we still have, you know, room in the, in the fuel budget, but it will.
We'll have to remember this, though, in. Certain budget time because you may come up short.
Right, unless he has some other places.
Bring it from. I think we'll be okay, but if not, I will, I will get with Braden. It's not gonna be like last year where everybody went over. That significant amount because, because the price was so outrageous.
Budgeted according on.
Right, right, so. And so, yeah, we're, I think Monday. We're gonna get it delivered and then um, start the, um, we've got to. Kind of rearrange, build a road, you know, to get the traffic to divert around, you know, so they're not. Apparently, they're going down the trench that we're gonna dig, so we've got some work to do to uh. You know, divert the traffic.
That could be a problem.
That's gonna be, yeah. That's gonna be interesting to see where people drive. They'll drive right past the narrow, you know, that's, that's turn left, we'll go straight.
Because we're looking for treasure.
Yeah. Uh, the only thing that I didn't put in here is I'm going to reach out to Jill again, email and phone call. I left a message with Jerry Henderson, her boss, the guy that's in charge of the solid base division. I, I didn't give no, nothing in return from them either, so. Um, we do have a new engineer that's taking over, um, well, it's still W S P over, but I'd have new contact. Yeah, Vance Smith is meeting, so. Darren Blue is the new contractor. And we've talked.
Well, I think if you believe it would be helpful or necessary for the commissioners to. Send the letter.
I think it might be. Let me reach out and I'll get back with you, yeah, cuz.
We need support.
You had uh, a pretty good relationship with them when you started.
Yeah. I don't know. If they're busy or, or what. I mean, I, my contact, who is the uh, the inspector, who will be out here probably in September, I would imagine, his name's Derek Bork. I reached out to him to see if he could get in contact with Jill and he said that, yeah, she's been busy, but she'll get on it, well.
Yeah, and I don't think that letter has to be threatening. It just has to be going up the chain somewhere. So somebody goes, what the hell am I getting this for?
What's he to her?
So Jerry Henderson is, is her boss. He's the main guy for. I left him a message. Derek Bore is, he's under, that's a different division.
I'm just wondering, you said you talked to somebody. He's, she's, he said she was busy. Who was that?
So I can reach out to him if you do. But luckily with this new trench, I mean, with, it's ridiculous that they haven't reached out. We've got more time, which um, is good. I will do that today.
We all know how fast the year will go.
Oh, I know.
You ever been to their office?
I have not, no.
Going to Denver sometime.
Yeah, I know where it is.
It'd be helpful just to show your face once in a while, that's okay. And we might even pay mileage.
You could go to Denver.
You plan and it's worth it sometimes, just the first head. You've been there, done that, you were up there.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Yeah, I know exactly where the building is. So, yeah, that's all I got. Unless you guys have anything.
Well.
Well, oh, yeah. Make a note of that.
No chance that we could leave the well in the area landfill?
Well, and that's something that we'll have to, I'm sure that the state will address when they. It currently has. So the map that the, that the E D O P has, it, it shows it in the area fill. It shows every well that's there. All the wet dry wells, um. No, it, it's, it's probably, I'm gonna guess, four hundred feet, not even from the net. It's probably a thousand feet. From the east part of the area fill that we stripped already to that well. But I don't know if they're gonna require us to cap that well before we put trash down. I, I don't know.
If they didn't require you that, we could leave.
We could leave it.
And we wouldn't have to drill.
I'll look at the E D O P. I don't think it says anything about that well. It just shows that it's there. I'll look at the E D O P. I don't think it says anything about that well. It just shows that it's there. It doesn't say anything about capping it, which will, it'll have to be capped eventually.
Would it be capped or extended?
Capped, cause there will be trash. They'll wanna fill it with concrete. Right, right.
Trash over the top of the wellhead, literally?
Early, yeah, it's gonna be underneath. That's why.
Top of it to, to come up as ground.
It'll be tapped.
So you're saying we will have to drill a new well?
We will eventually, yeah.
Can't go around that well. It's, how far is it from the north burn? Uh, I didn't think it was out there very far.
It's, it's probably from that north burn, I, I would guess. Hundred feet, hundred feet.
Well, I was thinking under a hundred. So we better plan on drilling the new well.
Yeah.
One way or the other. Then you're crewed up.
Yep. Anything else you wanna, you, you wanna take that? No, I'm good.
Well, thank you. How are you?
I'm good.
Seeing you every day now.
I know. Don't panic when you look at our report. It's off. I didn't.
Sorry, I wanted to ask a couple of questions.
When I looked at it, I about choked, so, um, I need to make sure I look at it before we send it out. We were in a rush to get it out, so.
What is?
We are having some reporting issues. From I work to our current system, so that's why it looks a little off. So I'll go through the correct numbers and I can send the new, the correct report out to you. For July of twenty twenty-three, we did fifteen septic inspections. Um, seven special conferences, fifteen closed out inspections, been very busy running. With everybody getting all their builds done this month. Three violation reviews and one septic contractor test was given for the month of July. It was actually a homeowner who had come in and wanted to do their own septic installation and we. Issued the test. He did very well and is now looking at, at being added to our contractors list. Um, overall septic permits, that number is correct, where we issued twelve septic permits. Down a little bit from last year, but not much. We did twelve dwelling permits, which is substantially higher than what we had on the. And our non-dwellings were up, we're at twenty right now, or we were, we ended the month of July with twenty. Bringing our total zoning permits at thirty-two for the month compared to twenty-five from last year. So at last month, I think we reported that we were, it kind of seemed like maybe things were slowing down. It's actually picked back up, so I don't know what the fluke was last month. Can't explain it, but I was happy to see that the numbers were where they are. Um, overall for twenty twenty-three, we're at eighty-seven septic permits. Seventy-four dwelling permits were issued compared to seventy-one last year. Our non-dwellings are up substantially at one twenty-one compared to one oh nine. Bringing our overall total zoning permits at one ninety-five compared to last year at a hundred and eighty, so it's not slowing down. Uh, the revenue, um, it is, I'm gonna give you the correct number. We did have a very large. Dwelling permit come in on the last day of the month. I believe there was three days at the end of the month that were not reported on here because of getting the reports out, and so. I'll, I'll give that to you at the end. Um, our zoning permits in twenty twenty-three, we're, for the year, we're sitting at two hundred and thirty-five, five thirty-seven. The septic permits were at twenty-six thousand twenty dollars. Our use tax is at one hundred and sixty-seven thousand six hundred and ninety-eight dollars. And then the general other income with S U Ps and variances, it's, it's, it's at sixteen thousand six hundred and twenty-nine.
Use tax, you know, was how much?
The use tax is one thousand seven hundred and sixty. I probably did, sorry.
The numbers we have are correct.
They are, they're correct on here.
Okay.
That, these numbers are, yes. Let me see, so we are, um, state septic surcharge fee is, uh, up slightly from last year at. One thousand five hundred and sixty dollars and that's the surcharge pass through that goes, we charge twenty dollars and then we. Send it back to the state each quarter.
We can go back.
Yes.
Four hundred and fifty-four thousand dollar.
Yes, actually, um. With the total from the end of the month, what, for the three days that weren't added, that was not added in there. It's four hundred and sixty-six thousand seven hundred and sixty-eight dollars and eighty-four cents. That is a total. Very happy.
Oh, my God, it's just incredible.
So we've more than doubled our income. Wow, so far.
Wow.
Very, very happy with that. And it, it's the use tax as well as the increase in the permit fees that we have. And just the overall increase in zone permits.
So you added that new one in there, you said, right? So when you did it, I got it, but. So four plus two is six. So I'm, I'm just wondering. I'm just adding it, so if you're adding. You see?
I, I believe that the.
So it is, all I'm saying is. When you added that new, new guy. Make sure you added it to whatever number you're supposed to be. These are all correct, you said. Right?
Correct.
Except for which one? Where did you add the new guy?
You know what? I don't know why that's not adding up.
I don't.
It's never not come out correctly. The septic permit, that wouldn't cause that number to be off.
But anyway, uh, you do have another number that's not showing yours. We'll, we'll get a current sheet that's right.
Correct. I will send that out when I get back over there to you guys. So you have the current, correct, updated numbers. I think it has to do with. Um, we were. Adding things into I work. We're also putting them into our regular system and it's just getting them all to. This should, that should have totaled correctly. I don't, I've never seen that before.
By ten cents.
Yeah, ten cents. I'll figure that out.
And the dollar draw to this George gone in their year.
I know usually it's because the septic permit fees aren't added in there, but that wouldn't make the difference of the ten cents.
Well, that's just incredible, man. That's great.
On another note.
Shoot the citizens for building things.
Yeah, actually, it's, it's thankful to them, correct. You're correct. We, we have had a few questions with the use tax and it, it's just education. We've had three questions in the past month. Um, really, it's contractor going there without their. Receipt in hand, expecting them not to be charged for the use tax. Well, that cashier has to charge them if they don't have that receipt. So we've just been doing a little bit more education, definitely trying to make suggestions to the contractors or the homeowner. To take a picture of it on their cell phone. That seems to work for them, um, and. Who doesn't usually have their cell phone with them? Then they're going to, to the supply store, so. Well, you could easily go get that if you, if it, if it's a difference.
Couple hundred bucks, so. I guess. Because I don't know the answer to that. So if a situation like that happens where they don't have it, they paid the tax. And then they go down and then they get charged that tax again, then what is the? The end result is that?
Well, it's, it's their responsibility to make sure that they have that receipt in hand. But you're right. Yes, it's only happened three times that we've had issues with that and it has been that they didn't have the receipt with them.
Are they able to go, yeah, I think you said that once they can call you and you can verify it over.
We could, we could text them a picture of it easy, yeah.
Are they able? Because I don't know the answer to that. Are they able to then? Say you go back and get their. Documentation and go back and, and get that tax money back.
I don't, I don't know that, Kevin. I don't have the answer to that.
That they came.
I would imagine.
That's just been dealing with.
Yeah, they should be able to, or else they, well. Don't ring me up or I'll go get that and then I can come back and do it, so that they don't end up paying in the first place.
But when, when we have those, um, concerns come forward, we're addressing them right away. But you're right that I have not run across that where they've. I don't know whether they've gone back and tried to get that money back or how that's happened, what's occurred. Usually it's they're calling us while they're standing there, so.
Yeah, and then if you could text that or something like that, so the store can see it and then take care of it right on the spot.
Absolutely, we can do that. Just some other items, things that we've been working on. We did, I don't remember if I mentioned this, but we did apply for the grant, Granicus grant. The application period has closed and we're just waiting to hear back on that. I did speak to Beth, who's in charge of most of that. I don't remember her last name. Um, she was. I, it was the first grant I had done, so I wanted to make sure I had all my eyes dotted and P's crossed and she did. Say that she had looked at it and everything looked good, so I don't know if that's positive or, or what. We'll, I will definitely let you guys know.
About five thousand even.
I believe it was right around there, yes. Um, I'd like to thank Cheyenne and Chi. I actually, I'd like to thank you guys for letting us, um, hire a temporary part-time person for the summer. We hired Cheyenne Chi. She did an outstanding job, very, very knowledgeable, picked things up right away. Um, her last day is gonna be on the seventeenth of August and, um, we're gonna be sad to see her go. She's. Was a great.
Email, remind us of that on the week of the fourth.
I will. Just to cover some of the compliance issues, this is definitely not all of them, that probably the ones that are coming to the forefront the most right now. Uh, currently we have four complaints of RVs dumping waste on the ground. Three of them I've had some communication with. And need to do more follow-up with. One of them, I'm going to need to involve adult protective services with that as long, as, as well as the sheriff's department. Um, it is somewhat of a big issue, so we're working that this week before the end of the week. Um, we'll be taking care of that. And that particular one I have sent notice out to. Just, um, there was no reply back, so it, and now it's become a bigger issue. Um, complaints had.
Have you sent those, email or mail?
I've sent certified mail to them.
And they got it?
Yes, it was both regular and certified and that was several months ago and.
So they got it, you know, man?
They did feel it, yeah, so. We just need to, it's become a bigger issue, so we will, we'll follow up on that a little bit. We have complaints right now of two unpermitted sawmills. One of them I've been working diligently with, trying to get them to the point where they have their land all permitted correctly, all their buildings and everything. So they can potentially move forward, but at this point with the lack of. Com- um, communication back from them, them not being very cooperative, I don't know that that's gonna move forward. So I, I, I will keep you updated on the progress there. The other one is a new one that is. Um, that I still need to go out and take a look at.
A new sawmill? With three involvement or two?
Two unpermitted.
Okay, so one, one is new and the other one, no?
Correct, yeah, one's been an ongoing issue and I, I've really tried to work with, with that particular individual. And, um, there's just not a lot of cooper- cooperation going back and forth, so. We do have another, an, another permitted, did I write that? Um. We have another S T R that we're receiving complaints on. There are current S T R. I have sent a notice out to the individual about the complaints that we received. It's been over forty-five days that I've sent that notice out and no communication back.
What are the complaints? Dirt, dust, noise?
Large crowds, being, the home has been, being rented to very large crowds. The trash is all over. I have pictures that have been sent to me. Um, I did speak to Paul Young. Paul's not associated with them. From that, from an S T R perspective, however, he does do maintenance on the home for the individual and he is gonna. Get, talk to them about getting a bear-proof garbage can. I don't know that that is the answer. It's more. Parties and things like that going on and, um, the individuals that they're renting to just not caring. And then the follow-up the next day not being. It's in the can. Well, um. Their address on Q public is that particular home. But when I spoke to Paul, he said that individual, the owner does live in Cotapaxy. So I did need to do a little bit of follow-up on that. They probably need to get a property manager. Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, if I may, Jared, comment, you know, we've said. That this is gonna be a. Governed by neighbor complaining deal. Well, if we get complaints from neighbors, we don't do anything about it, then guess what? The owners aren't us. Uh, I bet by the time we drop the hammer on somebody and take their S T R permit away from them, it'll be a wake-up call for everybody.
Well, we have, now it's my next one, the one that we took away. They are still renting that residence.
Do we know that for truth? We've gotten people saying they're, they backed in. You can't see their license plates and their family.
That's what's happening.
Anybody gone out there?
I, I did, actually, I went on Sunday, cause one of the neighbors, my cell phone number is on my business card. They called me. I went out there Sunday, spoke to the individual, um, and they told me they were friends of Adam's, which I can't. You know, they say that they weren't, I'm sorry.
They did not rent there.
He didn't, he wouldn't say one way or another to me specifically.
Now you gotta get with the owner to find out.
Well, yeah, I don't, um. I think I'm just gonna, at this point, I just kinda gotta keep going out there and speaking to the individuals who are there and hopefully it'll eventually cease. I don't.
Well, the owners and cannibals, and they're not talking to.
I have in the past. I did not send Sunday. Yeah, but.
Well, your neighbor's complaints had license plate numbers submitted to you.
That doesn't matter, cause if it is a friend or if it's a relative, if, if it's legitimate, you gotta figure out if that's legitimate.
The last three renters have all said that they were friends.
Okay, so what's the rule on friends?
I don't know that we have anything in writing on that, so, you know.
Buy the house, I can get, I can let my friend go in my house. So we have to be careful.
Ab- absolutely.
You haven't seen postings on any of the platforms?
I haven't, so I'm excited to see Gran, if we get Granicus, I think that will help. Um, there's a lot more, there's a lot of sites that people can rent on that I'm not aware of. That'll help.
Yeah, I agree, if you can, a hundred percent. One, if he wants to, that his friends stay there, or two convinces his renters to tell them they're friends, not much we can do about that.
So I'll keep.
Unless they're breaking the rules like no porta potties, uh, blah, blah, blah. If they're having a party, it's okay to have a party. It's not okay to. People staying there, overload, it's that big system right there.
The only compliance thing that I could see on the complaint is they had a fire. An open fire, yeah, on the porch or something and, and they did, whoever was there, when the neighbors notified them, they, they put it out, yeah. So that was good.
Good.
It's definitely, I guess. Once we pull their SDF, we make them no longer bound by the rules of that permit.
No, they're not.
They are then just private citizen.
Right.
Uh, so then it comes down to the to being able to say they are in fact.
That's right.
Renting it out or not. Uh. And that would be to find out if they have a listing somewhere.
Yeah.
That's right.
That's the.
That could happen to any citizen in the bottom of the valley or anywhere else in the neighbor city. I mean, like, the one who's in right here, you guys. I'm not an SDR either, but.
No, yeah. Just so you guys are aware and. It is difficult from my perspective, from my position to follow up on every single complaint. I'm not able to keep up with it. I'm being really honest. I get, especially this time of year. The complaints are coming in. I bet you we get five or six a day. And we can sit here and fire out letters right and left. But when only ten percent of those letters are replied to or returned or the action's done.
That's true. What happens even in the big city, anywhere? That happens and guess what? Then the complaints turn into complaints that the sheriff has to follow up on because they're either creating a public nuisance or whatever. Uh, shooting when they shouldn't be or whatever.
Yeah.
So that it becomes a point when you don't follow. You know, then, yeah, because if in this case, if it's a private citizen, then. We can't badger that private citizen with their own home unless the neighbors see. Some activity that anybody in there, you know, would see as a uh public nuisance or a ha- hazard, I should say, for people around.
Are you talking about complaints connected to STRs or?
Just in general.
Okay.
And I had a conversation with Dan Slater and he's going to get back to me, the planning commission. Um, in our workshop, we have decided to try to find out from Dan whether we could add a different, another layer in the process from.
Right.
Addressing complaints to do some type of stiff penalty on some situations. Because I'll tell you what I, so if we sent out four hundred letters and only forty of them replied back and did anything, brought themselves up to compliance. I don't have the resources to go out and our next.
But you're saying in this case, the actual STRs or whatever. I'm I'm saying somewhere you have to draw the line because we're not a homeowners association and there are a lot of people that feel like, I mean, I get calls. Why I got dogs out here? Why don't we have a leash out here on this guy? You know, you you've got to draw the line and then and eventually it goes down to. The sheriff has to follow up on on things that are beyond that. You see what I'm saying? It's not your job to be following up as the uh, you know, the homeowner. I mean, I've been there. I've been in homeowners association. They don't like how the chip, the paint is chipping on your house and they'll report you to that person. But here, it, you know, or that organization.
The only, the only complaints that I follow up on are things that are in our resolution.
I get on a re- on a specific STR or a SUP of some kind.
Yeah, it doesn't even have to be that. It can be somebody who's building a shed and it's not, they never came in and permitted it and they'll watch. If that part isn't posted, I get a phone call. You know, that's just one example.
And that's a good example to use, what it is with the right.
Yeah, I don't think you would be investigating code or for even from the outside of the zone.
That's right.
No, same.
And I think that's what you're saying. I did that. If it's not, if it's a violation of the zoning resolution, then it's in our.
Then it says I have five days to go investigate that and and take care of it, but I don't. I can tell you there's complaints that I have sitting on my desk that are more than five days old. I'm just being honest. I do not have this resources. Go out and address those within five days. So I do have down um. For our next, I need to send out an email to the planning commission because I would like to change that when you um. I I just don't have, I can't get it in five days, so maybe we change it to ten or, you know, fourteen days or something. I don't even know that that's going to make a difference. I can follow up on them. I can send out a letter.
Maybe the letter goes out first. That would be an easy thing in five days.
Depending on the violation, yes.
You have an address everywhere they're reporting it.
And that is how we do it depending on the violation. If it's dumping waste, I have to go out there and visually verify that. If it's something simple, I can send a letter and we do. Um, I wish there was a way to track our postage because now it all goes into general postage because I I was checking into that. I wanted to see where we were at this year compared to last year, but there's no way to track that. Because we have.
Be a way, somebody has to push the button to send the letter, you and you or somebody in the office, uh you can track.
I was just looking at from a income or an expense.
Yeah, uh postage is, that's our job and we need to, the postage is minor. That should be a thing we have to recognize. We gotta do that.
Right.
So.
I just was interested to see how much we had done compared to last year.
It's a thousand of them. Take that times fifty cents.
That's more than fifty cents. It's eight dollars and.
Eighty cents.
Forty-five cents, I believe, for remaining plus for the registered and then you also, I also have to send out the regular now, so it's it's like, yeah. It's a lot of money.
It is a lot of money, ten bucks.
Yeah.
Ten times that.
And if they reply, then we charge that back to them, but. Most of them, ninety percent of them aren't replying.
Which really means ninety percent of them are throwing their nose at us.
Yeah.
What it really means, they're just ignoring us.
And I've, and I've had people that have complained that have come in and said, you know, you don't care, you're not doing anything. I'm doing what I can with the resources that I have.
Yeah.
Yeah. Um. Just some kind of updates on what's going on. We're sending, we have one SUP for a short-term dog boarding. Um, place. It's out on County Road, I believe, two fifty-five. Um, we went out and did a site review with the planning commission last week, early this week. Um, and I'll get, keep you guys updated on where that, where that's going. They will, it'll, it's on the agenda for this.
That one right on Monday.
Mm-hmm.
How many PG men were on site here? Send them, how many planning commission members were on site here?
At least five, five. There were five, six probably because I don't think I counted correctly. So, you know, and we, we actually went just because noise was one of the biggest issues. We went down the road by one, the closest neighbor in this direction, the closest neighbor in this direction and Mary honked.
Somebody down there, yeah.
Yeah, can you hear? She was honking her horn and and one, because the way the wind was blowing, you could hear it this way, but they didn't hear it down this way, so, you know, it's. It's a large acreage, you know, and the neighbors are, except for One Direction, are kind of. Um, surrounded by trees, so we're, I think having the site tour was useful for them. So that they could actually see what the impact is. Yeah. Uh, we do have one, yeah, SUP that we believe will go on next month's. We have two STRs that'll be on um Mondays, this coming Monday's planning commission. The STRs are backfilling us, um ones that have. One, the one that was revoked as well as the sons had an STR and we. We counted that as an STR in that zone and it didn't have to be because. They were backfilled with another person, so it wasn't an increase in that number for that zone, so we were able to get another STR pushed through, so.
So there were two SUPs, you got, you slipped right into STR.
Sorry. Um, we have one, yeah, one SUP and two STRs. I probably said that one. On the agenda for this Monday. And then one in the works that's been, um, we've been speaking to, we haven't received the actual SUP, but we're thinking we'll be on next month. Uh, the point I talked about, site review, one thing that I didn't bring up yesterday and I promised a contractor I would, so I'm going to bring it up today. And I didn't bring the paperwork. I apologize. I will email that to you. The state has granted a variance to an individual for a well to be drilled. Eighty feet, within eighty feet from their bleach field. Normally, it's a hundred feet. The state granted the variance because the well driller has given them. His plans and what he is going to do is encase the piping down in the well eighty feet. With additional metal and cement piping. So, um, I, I guess my question is today, are we, it, can I grant that variance from our perspective or does that need to come to? The Board of Health?
What do you mean? That's a su- that supersedes us? Are you talking about that, that one we?
Yeah, it.
Are you talking about in the future?
Well, both really. I think um if, so if the state gives me a variance and and they can prove that it's been approved, this variance has been approved for the state. The way I understand it, we, we can say no because the county supersedes that. But I would like to us to consider if the state has approved that variance.
See, the variance has to be approved on the engineering and actually the topography if they think it's reasonable because they could require a lot more casing or not, or they could require none or they could say no. So there was some engineering that went into that variance.
Yeah, I'd say if the state gives them the variance, that should probably supersede us.
I do too.
I agree.
I do too.
I think it's an administrative thing.
I do too, just you just.
Long ago for a fact, you've seen this.
I have it.
I have it.
Never doing file, maybe you got that nice.
That way we're off the.
I agree with that. Thank you. And I really do think that may help us out at the lakes. And if they are willing to go that extra mile to get that variance to the state, then we could maybe put in some additional full septic systems at the lakes.
Right.
If they're willing to do the extra, go the extra mile.
It costs a lot more money, so they.
It will, but it may be, it's i- in the long run, I think it would be beneficial to them if they're having to have their.
It would be beneficial for us too as a, an economy.
Mm-hmm.
Citizens, it's.
Yeah. Well, I will let that contractor know. Thank you, guys. Would you like a copy of that variant? Okay, I'll put it in the file.
Sure, you got one in there.
You're doing your job. That's what matters.
I have, and I just wanted to get. Just wanted to.
Very visible in the file, so twenty years down the road and they pop that file and they know the answer to that question. Yes, for some reason it came up.
That's all I have.
Very good.
Thank you, Mano. Thank you. Have a good day. See you later. Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Yep.
Thank you.
Mr. Recycle.
I, I, I had two questions.
Set you, uh, uh.
Rob Klein.
Yeah.
Uh, do you have questions for?
Zoning.
Who's gone?
Grab.
Hang on. Guess we need to ask a few questions.
Well, typically.
We don't, that matters. Mostly.
Yeah, normal. Uh. I'll let you go and ask her a little on you, so what's that? Uh, I would, uh, if you wanted to ask the questions, uh, I can pass them on to her because uh. And see if she has an answer for you, sir. And you're, this is Robert Klein?
Yes, I I can type them in if you want. I wasn't sure how you guys want to work it.
Uh, go ahead. Uh, she has returned back to the room.
Okay, appreciate it. Uh, yes, regards to zoning, is there any way, I'm from the Centennial Ranch, is there any way that you guys could. Uh, put a road maintenance fee? Is that something you guys would handle or the association would handle that?
Uh, if it's private road, that's an association, a homeowners association uh issue and they would have to put that fee in and hire their own maintenance.
Okay, second question. In regards to the complaints that you were talking about, uh, once again, in regards to at least our association here in uh Centennial Ranch, uh, if there's any. Uh, complaints to on building or whatever, we have our own covenants that. Uh, address this to the zoning, so maybe to take some weight off your shoulders, you could just notify the association board. And really, it's our responsibility to make sure that some of these uh zoning uh issues. Uh, the association is responsible for that more so than you, I would think.
Well, we have our own regulations that they're required to follow if they live in the county. The association is. Responsible uh to enforce their own covenants.
Right, I understand that, but one of our covenants specifically states. Uh, to get, we have zoning restrictions in place, so wouldn't that also fall on the HOA's responsibility?
It could, it could, yes. Uh, but ultimately, anything in our zoning is. Falls to our planning and zoning department. Uh, if you have similar regulations, you guys can pursue them on your side as well.
Okay, I was just trying to take some of their weight off our shoulder to go out and look at it because, you know, we have a. A committee that's supposed to go out and check these things that are in violation of the zoning, uh, so that's all I was trying to uh.
I think, I think you guys, it depends on the bylaws, but I would think you'd care if somebody dumping junk on the ground. That's fact, so I think that would help it.
Yeah.
Or they can just send you.
So on some of these, if we were pursuing it on one side and the HOA was on the other side, it it probably would garner a little better compliance, so. Uh, yeah, that's, that's a good issue, a good thing that you brought up there.
And I have worked with the Centennial Ranch HOA, um. I know that they changed, didn't, didn't you guys just recently change who is the president of your HOA?
Well, last year, yes.
Okay, um, so I've worked with them in the past. If you guys, if there's anything that I can help you with, please let them know to call me and um I'll do the same.
Vice versa, just.
Yeah.
An address.
They won't, they won't, they won't get involved. They're very lackadaisical, so they're not going to get involved.
I just don't keep track of the HOA covenants and um what your rules and regulations are for each area. We have to go by the resolution and. But I will definitely work with any HOA that. Um.
But I think what you're saying.
Lots of work with you.
After asking, you have an address, it's out there. I just send them the notes and whether you, I'm going to follow up with them, a letter or not, give it to them, let them.
Yeah. You can do that.
And it might be cheaper the long way doing it that way also as far as sending out, you know, recertified letters, whatever you guys normally do.
That'd knock on the door.
And kind of on the note, you know, we will, we will pursue things. If they're a violation in our resolution. Uh, that being said, we do not enforce. The HOA covenants, uh, and that is, that is up to the HOA, but a lot of times those do overlap and so that would be an area that would be good. Uh, a good use, so yes, thank you, sir.
Okay, appreciate that. Thank you very much for your time.
Yeah.
All right. Thanks for talking about Dorothy.
Yeah.
Uh, yes, uh, we will take a quick recess, uh. Let's uh fire back up at eleven o'clock. That'll give you six minutes. Thought I'd let you sit there for a minute.
Rules on on how everything works. But I think we're gonna go a little bit further. We're gonna have a safety meeting before each. Each session, uh, and we will assign us like a safety captain um that that is actually. Keeping an eye, a very close eye on everybody.
Yeah, and so. I'm I'm looking at this and you know. That if you if you have those safety meetings, so you have a subject for your safety meeting, you have the people sign them. The attendance sheet, you keep.
Yes, we do.
So that if anything arises in the future. And they say, oh, well, if you address this before, you know. When OSHA comes in or whatever.
Right, right.
And you can say, well, yeah, as a matter of fact, here we had that. Particular safety meeting right here, and here's the people that were in attendance and things like that.
Correct, yes, sir. And that is why we are trying to formalize it a little more. Now, we do have sheets that are required that they sign. You know, explaining, explaining, you know, what their what their rights are, what our responsibilities are toward volunteering. Um, but I wanna go a step further than that, and if they've had. You know, any specific training on um. You know, on the bail or 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 something like that. Um, then we will sign off on that. We will keep that all documented, so um. And we we have established a set of rules, but. We're looking to formalize even those even more, so. So we are, we are moving ahead with that.
Sound like you're doing good. I I just I hadn't asked that question or it hadn't came up before.
Right.
Uh, ask it. Thank you.
Yes, sure. Okay, uh, moving on to sales revenue, uh, year to date, and these are somewhat of an approximation. I know I I say that every time um. Um, we have certain things that, you know, we don't know what the weights are for. Several weeks and the and it takes several weeks for the checks to actually come in from the destination. So this is a slight, uh, this is approximation, uh, year to date. Uh, ten thousand one hundred and thirty-four seventy. Uh, June totals, we had, um, and this does include all the freight expenses. Uh, cardboard approximately a thousand dollars. Um, all our cardboard went to Republic Paper in Tulsa. Um, aluminum. Um, two thousand one hundred eight dollars, uh, that was shipped to Denisio's Metal and Iron. Steel, two hundred and fourteen dollars and fifty cents, and that was also Denisio's Metal and Iron, and those aluminum and steel are the exact number. Um. July total, again, a thousand dollars um to Republic Paper. Um. In July, we sold and shipped thirty-four bales, approximately thirty-nine thousand pounds of cardboard. Uh, through Sureway, which is a new broker. Um, that we are, we're dealing with. Uh, previous to that, it was Centennial, which we still deal with Centennial, but Sureway um. Gave us uh sixty dollars per ton rather than the fifty-five five that was offered by uh Centennial. So we tried them, um, it worked well. Um, let's see, mixed paper, approximately six hundred dollars, that went to Applegate in Arizona. Um, we shipped thirty-two bales, approximation forty thousand pounds uh of mixed. Um, and we did go through Centennial with that one, and uh, that was thirty dollars per ton. And they're using that for the manufacturer of a specific kind of insulation. Um, let's see. Um, our grant revenue, uh, those were both in June. The R R E O grant was um fifty thousand forty-eight, I believe I mentioned that last report. And then we had a Adola U A A C O G grant uh for fifteen sixty-two, and I believe that is targeted at the roof of the office. Um. And just one other thing, I completed on the thirty-first, I completed our fourth. Uh, progress report on the original grant from uh the Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment. Um, and that's just, you know, explaining what we did over the last six months, what we project we're gonna be accomplishing. Six months from now or within the next six months, so that was submitted and completed. Um, our volunteers. You know, as usual, I can't say enough about them. They're vital. Um, they're doing an outstanding job. They're involved in everything. Um, our total volunteer hours, and this is from the sign-in log uh at the facility. We had thirteen participating in June, twelve participating in July, three hundred and fifty-seven hours year-to-date. Forty-two hours in June, fifty-seven hours in July. And that's what I've got.
All right, thank you very much, sir.
Well, thank you. It is one to loten, and it's it's being used, from what I understand, for backing on uh uh. Drywall.
Appreciate it, man. Good job.
Yep. Thank you much.
Yeah, you bet. See you later. All right, well, uh, Robin. You're in person. We got a couple of reports that we have on our computers, but since you're here in person, if you'd like to go ahead and. Uh. Jump in, you may, or if you wanna sit there and watch us go through the others.
How are you?
Good, how are you?
Good, thank you.
See you, Robin.
See ya. Reminds me of one I used to have with a matching skirt.
All right, let me see if I can find you here.
Yeah, start with the grants usually, um. As you know, from the budget meeting, uh, we're in the process of getting caught up on our request for reimbursement. For first quarter that has been submitted, and we're getting close on second quarter. So that will bring in more on the revenue side to our budget. Um, we're on track for the requirements. There's about fifteen things I have to do every quarter. And uh, we're just coming right along on those and. Christie Coleman sent a dashboard that kinda shows. Where we're at and uh, we're right on track, so we're keeping up with with all of those requirements. The E M P G Special Projects Grant Funding, which um, if you're looking at the report, I think I forgot to put a zero on that fifty percent match. Five my, no, that's not right. Excuse the typo, um, but it looks like it'll be around thirty-nine thousand dollars. Uh, we understand it'll be any day that we get. The special uh grant funding uh letter, award letter, and. Um. I know that we did the additional matching uh approval. Um, I don't know if the money has been moved into there yet, um, but. It's a reimbursable program, so we'll spend the money and then get reimbursed. We do have to have everything spent in hand, invoiced and paid. Um, by October, so it's a very quick turnaround. Um, but we're pretty sure we can, we can do that with the the products that we have. Asked for grant money for. So that's just a couple more days, maybe, and we'll get to getting those things. H M P G, we're still working on the final reports, uh, did my last quarterly report. Uh, for the grant and still working on uh that lot budget line that we talked about, the eighteen thousand dollars. And we did find that one of the E M P G uh. Grant reimbursements from twenty twenty-two was put into the Homeland Security account, so we'll get that. Fixed, probably an easy fix just to switch that, but it was in the wrong account. And we're trying to let um Virginia know. If we're expecting a reimbursement and giving her an exact amount so that she could figure out where it is, cuz she doesn't know, like the last one that came in said ARPA. I'm like, hmm, I don't know, we don't usually get ARPA, so I had to do some research and.
Yeah, because of the fact, the way things come in now to her, when they were paper check. In the notation, a lot of times they would actually have that explanation, but now when a lot of the electronic stuff comes in.
Yeah, E F T comes in, it's just money in, and it's.
So. There's been multiple times when she's been searching, trying to find out. Who is receiving money and so. Uh, anybody that's expecting money, if they could let her know that in the mouse. That helps, so then it's. Somebody's expecting twenty thousand, twenty thousand comes in, she might go ask there first.
Yeah, yeah, it does help, so, so yeah, I'm trying to do that, um, and then we also got the check finally from. Tri-Tech where we had a duplicate payment to the vendor. And was sitting as a credit, and of course, they just credited in their in in our account and uh. Never, you know, notified anybody.
You don't need anything else from it.
Yeah, who knows, but um, so I finally got that check back and got that to Virginia this week as well, cuz. It was delivered to the clinic. So I went over there for the hospital board meeting, uh, Melody said, I I have something for you. I'm like, what? So I have really bad luck with the post office stuff, for sure. Um. Homeland Security Grant, the generator scope change, you know, did not go through. Um, I did uh run the idea by the Homeland Security Grant Coordinator about to stop the bleed kits after doing quite a bit of. Discussion with the schools, the camps and uh EMS. Everybody was super excited about it, and the coordinator is not recommending that that's what I put through, that that's more response. And they're really looking for surveillance, surveillance type projects, which. We did explore through the sheriff's office and talked about, you know, having like a a camera. That could be available for special events, and you know, the guy brought that stuff down and Rich and I looked at it. And uh, basically, the thought was that that may not quite fit our community with the. Security surveillance. So, the tactic I'm taking now is I'm going to get some upgraded. Family service radios for the school. They have indicated that, you know, the shop is way back in there, that their landline doesn't work, and so. Um. At least they would be able to talk to each other, and then uh because they are just a couple of mile radius. Um, we we're gonna have a uh set of the radios sent to us. So we can test them and see um if we had, you know, radio at O E M or radio at. Sheriff's Office, uh, if that might work. Problem with the school radios is they're not considered first responders, so they can't get the. D T R megahertz, eight hundred megahertz radios, cuz they're not first responders. Would be better if we were all on one channel, but this is kind of a hitch in the system. So. That's.
They can get eight hundred radios when not for a grand. Or if they can't get an eight hundred.
They wouldn't have a license because they're not first responders. So we could, you know, loan them one in an emergency. Uh.
So is Road Bridge considered a first responder?
Probably, yeah, because they have the water trucks and tenders and stuff, yeah, yeah, I'm sure they are. Uh, so, uh, we've also been asked to assist with uh. Radios for uh West Cliff. And they would like to have a radio. So we're working on how to work that, cuz like, your radio that you gave us is. If it breaks, we cannot fix it, so it's not really programmable anymore, it's so old. So we have at least two radios that will be part of the E M P G grant. So that Jennifer and I can have the the newest radios, so we can go to all those channels. And then we'll still work on that whole radio inventory and the drilling and all that kinda stuff that needs to happen with the radios, so. We're still working on the plan, but um this Homeland Security Grant, as you know, has been a little difficult because of the fact that it has to be soft targets. And deployable. And now then I'm told surveillance oriented, so.
I mean, I guess they could be deployable, but.
They could, you know.
Kind of weird, you can fasten them on the wall of the building.
Right, they do come in like a six-pack or an eight-pack, and you know, you could say, like, um, you know. Call them in here and then send them all out to someplace, uh, but you know, kinda too late, probably with those, cuz those are meant to be. Right away kits.
Right, so I would say.
Yeah, but I mean, they are, like, they're not fixed to like a security camera on the courthouse or whatever. So anyway, I'm continuing to work that. I don't know uh what the end result will be. So. I'm trying. Uh, the cybersecurity, I haven't heard from Vernon, if we have gotten that or not, uh. Soon as I know, I'll let you guys know. Salamander credentialing, badging and inventory, um, we are in the process of getting a license for an inventory system. And basically, that'll spit out a a scan code. And we'll be able to put that on inventory and then be able to. Have it come in and out that way through uh a spreadsheet. It's a a computer attached to that, so it will be uh an uh opportunity for us to. Also loan that to other agencies or jurisdictions that would like to also do their inventory on a spreadsheet. So like the sheriff was saying, you know, it would be really helpful cuz they have their own spreadsheets just for the radios, and you know. Deputy turns over and then you gotta do a lot of updating, but um. With this new badging and inventory, you just. Print off the label and stick the label on the asset and then it'll time it in and time it out, so. Like for the variable messaging signs, if they get deployed somewhere, we'll know where they are, because we can put in there where they're going and. Yeah, they have a better idea of stuff. Training, uh, we had, went to a salamander training uh down in uh Hoopin Oak County. And um they have done this with all of their inventory. They started with Road and Bridge. And um they are doing it for their whole county. So we'll see how how we want to to proceed. Obviously, we'll start with our assets first and radios. We'll be starting a badging process for employees, and we've just tiptoed into that with um Brayden and Lisa. Um, we're trying to tie the badging and the training together. So um it's been a while since, I guess, emergency training has been either offered or pitched. So um we'll work on what employees need to take what training. And this is, I think, probably uh. Just a a cycle in that, if you know, was. Part of a resolution that said we would be NIMs compliant. Which is tied to the federal grants, of course. And so what we want to propose for how much training each person needs to take with a base training, and then. If they're a supervisor, they would probably take a different level of training. So what we'll be looking at, like different ways, like. When this listening to Tim's um presentation about uh. Recycling, you know, uh, in a disaster, he would have a role, or someone would have a role on the landfill side. Um, because in a disaster, there's always a lot of stuff. And so having to get rid of all that material. Um, and be thinking about how, you know, how would we do that? Um, and have we done that before? I know in other situations. Um, and I don't know what the landfill costs are here, but the um. Sometimes they can defray the cost during a disaster. You know, like the first two loads out out there would be half price, right, and something like that, so, but it does, you know.
Every.
We would set it at half price.
Uh huh.
Or.
Yeah. So that would be uh just something that would help defray the cost during a disaster, you know, you lost your home, but then now you got all this stuff that's there, and you gotta get rid of it, and how do you get rid of it?
Yeah.
Um, you know, some insurances will pay for the contractors to come out and get rid of it, but if they don't have insurance or they're underinsured. Um, so just like every department in the county, um, we can. Just go over that role in a disaster and how. How uh we can do more planning. So if it's, if they understand I C S and they have training, then they understand a little bit better about how to work with a system. Make sense?
Hmm.
Um, I went to the Cert Conference in California, um, I've got lots of ideas, and um we do have a few supplies. There, uh, I met a vendor that provided those supplies, and we're going to. Take uh and look at those kits and see if they're all updated. So. We'll see how we are able to proceed on Cert. Of course, that was a one-time training that we had here. I don't know, maybe five years ago. And there were about fifteen people. We started with a little small cadre, and then things dribbled off. So um we're just working on how to um attract people into that area. We also went to a regional communications meeting, um, I met with Deb Adams at the Tourism Board, talked a little bit about economic recovery and business recovery. Just, just tiptoeing into that, uh, because recovery is a long-term process and. You know, there's a, there's individual recovery, and then there's community recovery, and then there's. Business recovery, there's just a lot of different facets to the recovery side. And we are still waiting on a couple resolutions. I think now we're up to, we have nine of our. Uh, ten resolutions for the two plans. So we're very close to having everything in for both plans. Had a meeting with the American Red Cross Human Services and Public Health. Um, and O E M to discuss mass care, sheltering, bulk distribution, feeding and welfare inquiry. Uh, did a hospital board presentation, and um they're doing some great things over there to uh. Uh, try and gauge community needs, and they're looking at do a survey, which I think is gonna be really exciting for seniors. Um, see what kinda services we need, and of course, they're getting a pharmacy over there, so that's pretty exciting. Um, we did two sessions of the E O P, so the Emergency Operations Plans, instead of just saying, oh, we got a approved. Plan, we took the last two C E S meetings to go over. The concept of operations and then the individual specific roles, and they had everybody brief out. On those that knew their role and understood their role and could um present that. So that I think, well, well, we now have a wildfire working group. We met of. Last month, and our first meeting, uh, we hammered, kinda hammered out a table of contents for. Uh, Community Wildfire Protection Plan, so we're gonna do that internally instead of uh subbing that out to a contractor. And so I have Forest Service B L M, um, Reggie's involved from uh the uh. Ag side, and really the fire mitigation side is a part of uh. Colorado State Extension. And then uh. Uh. We've invited Vernon to be a part of that group because we need to. Map the high-risk areas for wildfire, so that's our next step, is to come up with those high-risk areas and then. Look at what the potential would be for higher priority mitigation projects. So. And I guess we have a chipper. Somebody said we have a chipper? Yeah, at Roden Bridge, so that could be part of our plan, is to take chippers out to homeowners associations as they collect their fuel. Um, you know, we'll come up with our actions after we do our analysis.
And that is a. I guess I'd say, at the present time, that's a, that's a road bridge asset, so it would be something that would need to be coordinated through them.
Okay.
Not just saying, hey, I can get your chipper.
Yeah, they've asked us about, you know, the message signs, and so I think, you know.
So. Yeah, that's the the communication part.
Yeah, that's fine.
Things of that nature.
Yeah, and they're they're anxious to actually take some of the disaster training classes. Um, so. We're gonna put together a plan for them.
At one point, there was quite a few of them, whether they had the seven hundred.
And I don't think there's very many anymore.
Was at one point, so.
Yeah.
You've had a lot of new best.
Mm-hmm, yeah. Well, you know, they, when they first came up with all those classes, they said, oh, yeah, you're really gonna have to take them again. Well, now they have, you know, seven hundred D or E, so they've gone through four or five upgrades, so. Really, every ten years is probably, especially if you're not using it, and we don't have a lot of incidents, so. We, you know, don't use it a lot, so you kinda forget. And I had to take quite a few classes over again, too, so. Um, but we'll be working on the employee plan, and hopefully we'll tie that into our badging plan, so once you get your training, you get your badge. So we have a lot of training planned, uh, we have a disaster finance workshop for August fourteenth. And we have uh Lisa and Brayden, uh, as well as Kathy and Eileen from the two towns. Uh, we've invited the school, even though they're not a county asset, they would still have things that they probably have to collect financially. Um. And if there's anybody else that you think, talk to Virginia, and she's like, no, I don't really think so, cuz we're money in. Um. So. If there's something there that I missed, let me know, uh, anybody else that does finance that would. Okay. Maybe Roden Bridge, or Sherry, cuz she does the internal. Stuff or. Maybe.
What are you looking for?
Just backup to finance, cuz if we have a big disaster, there'll be a lot of things you have to pay for, and then you have to keep track of, because you have to get reimbursement. So. You're just trying to build up the cadre in finance, cuz pretty small staff.
Yeah. The, I could see, I got a big incident where Road and Bridge had assets, they graders or filters and water trucks. So she was not familiar with the finance for the reimbursement.
Mm-hmm, yeah. So, and I don't know of any other department that has kind of that similar. I don't know, does landfill have that? Not really. So that'll be a workshop, uh, Christie's going to teach that, so it'll be um very localized. And, you know, we can send um Brayden and and Lisa to more training. But finance is really kinda one of these strange things, it's fair, not very specific to. Local government, it's usually like on a fire or on a big incident, and it's not easily translatable to the local level. So that's why we started with the workshop. Um, we are hosting the E S S, E S F five meeting, that's the emergency management meeting for the whole South Region. And so um that'll be in August, so that'll be the five counties that we surround us. And then looks like the audit might be next week. Um, not exactly sure if anything's scheduled yet, but that's kinda what I'm hearing.
It's here.
Yeah, so we'll, we'll participate in that for last year, just wanted to make note that I. Did not work that fiscal year, so I'm not sure. Well, I just don't have every answer, let's just put it that way. I'm trying.
Don't blame you.
Yeah.
Their finance workshop gonna be.
Where? Sorry. Um, and then just some upcoming uh deadlines is that uh a Homeland Security Grant. Needs to be done by October fifteenth, the E M P G Special Projects October, so we're gonna be heavy on. Uh, once we get those uh notifications, we be heavy on purchasing. Uh, September, we're gonna do a simulation of an E O C, so we're gonna take all our stuff in our trailer. Um, we're going to use our new inventory badging system and get all our stickers on there, and then. Uh, deploy it to an E O C off-site location, so we have experienced setting it up and then. Um, invite uh our different partners from the different. Emergency support functions to be a part of that drill. I'm looking to attend the I C S instructor class for October. Um, that is, happens to also be Budget Week here, I believe. So um I may have to zoom in for my budget meeting, if that would work, I don't know.
Sometimes when we see the tears in your eyes, it matters. It's over, then. So you you be the joy, your choice.
Yeah, well, I did try and get into a class the previous week up in Johnstown, it's full. And my options are doing an instructor class online, which I'm not thrilled about. But is a last resort, so. Yes.
Yeah.
We'll see.
It is my idea.
Yeah. Um, I already mentioned that we'll be taking, uh, after I get that class, I'll be teaching some of these one hundred and seven hundred classes. Face to face, they are primarily independent study classes where you go into computer, but you can do a facilitated lecture. Uh, for that uh concepts, and a lot of people learn better that way, so we'll be doing that. You know, after I get that class. And we're working on the salamander badging and um. Inventory, um, we are also making sure that we have. The correct processes for purchasing. Uh, because the finance workshop will help with that. And then having to, you know, purchase all these things for grants, if they're over so much money, you have to have three bids. So we need to have that documentation in our files, so. We not only have county audits, but we have those grant audits and nothing's been scheduled yet, but we want to have all that in our files. And then working on twenty twenty-four already. Um, we have set the dates for a state assessment called the Colorado Emergency Preparedness Assessment, our CIPA. Uh, we did that, I think in twenty-one. So it's been a little while, and so it just looks at all the capabilities for home and security and emergency management. Where we are, verifies what we need to do as far as exercise, plans, training, all those things. So that's already set um, for January is some pre-meetings and then February, we have a big stakeholder. Uh, group, which is basically CES. And then um, we're going to be working on a work plan for uh, our areas. To focus on will be preparedness, mass care, finance, evacuation, reentry planning. And alert and warning annexes, so those are things we would add at the back of our plan as an annex. So even though we've got the EOP, we probably need about twenty annexes. We need a cyber annex, which hopefully if we get that grant, they will help us write the cyber annex, so. Vernon will work on that and then um. Will, you know, work with the appropriate departments or uh, other offices on all of these. Annexes and how they would work during disaster. So you're never done when it comes to plan. Okay. And then I'm thinking about uh, attending a conference in November uh. In uh, Long Beach, it is uh, a certification for the International Association. Of Emergency Managers. Um, just looking at my budget to see if that's.
Or is it?
Portable. Long Beach. And it's always been a really good conference, I think the one, the year after is at. Godmore? So, we haven't had that conference in a long time, so if I don't, if I don't go this year, probably go next year. Oh, okay. So what are they, you, what do they use when nine one ones?
A great question, I don't know. Probably be a question to ask the OEM.
Well, we do, we do use uh. We do use Web EOC in some counties, I just don't know if they do that here.
All right, ma'am, well, thank you.
Yeah, I have one last thing. Um, and that is we are going to obtain a leased copier. For the Star Building, because we do a lot of plans and uh. I think this is in our best interest to. Just get our own copier. So I have a image agreement. I don't know who signs that, I know I don't. I do, it's a pretty affordable, hundred and forty-eight dollars a month. So.
Can you say a new copier?
So it would just be a big copier. Similar to the ones that you have at Treasures and.
So one seven nine cents. For black and white and or point nine cents for a color copy.
That's the same that that county is paying for the other copiers. It's the same company.
Would that come out of your equipment budget and I'm pulling up the budget?
Yeah, there's supplies and equipment, is it supply? Office. Yeah, office, whatever that line that says office. Something. Supplies, yeah, it's office supplies. That's the first budget item.
Need fixture address.
Yes, I probably need a little initial on that.
Careful how you initiate, otherwise you might end up on there under shipping.
I have the worst luck with shipping.
If he's going to sign that, I'm assuming we need a motion to that effect.
Authorized. Application for a new printer release. Printer release.
On the monthly contract and annual or how long we sign it up for, do you know?
Sixty months.
Sixty months.
It's the same as the county.
Did you say one forty-eight oh eight?
One forty-eight oh eight. The term is for sixty months, has to be looked at every one month or every year.
So the options, I did look at all the options. Uh, purchasing a brand-new machine is about eight thousand dollars. Purchasing a used machine, which are no more than about two years old. Is fifty-three hundred dollars, which I do not have in my budget. It's so. The maintenance agreement is twenty-five dollars a month if you purchase, yeah, if you purchase. Yeah, so the, the benefits, of course, of leasing are when you have the, the new features that they come out with and. You can upgrade them and get a new one, so um, you know, looking and evaluating at all the options. Uh, and looking at my budget, it looked like that would be the best option.
Uh, no, I did not, but. I wish the budget was in a different format.
You have to go through the revenue. Yeah, scroll through all the revenue and I think it's the first. The first.
Well, I thought this was an expense, not a revenue.
Right, but the way the. The, the way I see the budget, of course, is I see all the revenue pages first.
Then you roll down to the expenses.
Yeah.
That's where I'm at.
First one, first. Office.
Well, I can't even find it, we.
But I trust you.
Well, this isn't a matter of trust. It's a matter of knowledge, right?
You want to learn, that's okay, I've seen it. I believe, I saw it.
And technically, if you uh, is this something that I would be signing or is this something you would be signing because it's something that you, if you had it written in your budget for?
Uh, my understanding is that I don't sign contracts.
You're an electric official, so you sign your leases on that, but.
We do, I think, I'm, I was just trying to think on. I don't remember if you guys sign those or actually Vernon signs them, because they go through, you know, I don't know.
That's for the county. But I don't have a problem with you signing, if you should.
No, they're getting charged now with each department getting charged.
Broken up out of general sum in, in their name, if they have one.
If they have one, yeah, and you know, we're all one team, so. It's all the same money.
What do you have over there?
Just a little. Already broken. And then Vernon ordered a printer that doesn't have a scanner, so. Yeah. We, we need a big one.
Yeah, being a quote-unquote off-campus, can't be run over here every time they need to make her.
It's not too bad in summer.
Bad when the blizzards are coming and the ice is there and.
Hey, so I have a motion on the floor to approve the lease agreement for a. D-Rocks. Copier for the OEM department for a hundred and forty-eight oh eight. A month and it's a sixteen-month term. That motion carries. When they, they didn't get it through, did they say?
Uh, I don't know, I um. I've been talking to Vernon about the. Hmm, forget what it is, cable, some cable we have to have over there, but we have it.
And then we'll let you fill in the federal tax ID number one. And you need a copy of that? All right, so, I guess. If you could make sure that.
Thank you, appreciate it. You want me just to? Stand it in you.
Thank you, Robin.
Appreciate it. Have a good afternoon. We're almost there.
Yeah, no, I'm, I still have no countertops in my house, so I have um, flyboard up there and I.
Have a good afternoon.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, we have a couple of reports that were submitted to us, if you guys have any questions on them real quick and then we can uh. Move on and we can. Get Patrick up here. Appreciate you waiting for us, sir. Apparently, I didn't have to call you that we were running ahead of schedule, so.
No. I'm good with what we got here.
Uh, the first one that you have would be uh, the, I believe the uh. We've already done landfill, so you've got the. Came in, uh. I went through that, you had fair reports. Other things you had, including the soil kits and. I was good with that. Uh, your next one then would be. Uh, Human Services and Morris Department. I did not see anything out of the ordinary that struck me. On that. I mean, we don't even, we did Roden Bridge. You could get Colfax tip-toe. Road stabilizer, that's their Mac Floric, and they gave us a list of all those roads they did. Probably the two main things on that report. Let me see, they got a couple of salaries on it highlighted on this. Budget. Moving bridge. Oh, okay, I should scroll down and I might follow. And it may be. Well, without him being in here, I know you, there's a couple of line items that he's over on, but he's going to be. Under his, moving some monies around his. Uh, his gravel budget, of course, uh, he went ahead and had him pressure a little more gravel. More on that and I think on his maintenance budget because of uh. When, main item was a transmission or more of a strong deer graders, if I remember correctly. Get on everything there. Okay, uh, so that's the one we. We have no unfinished business. And so we have one item on our new business. Which would be the consideration of the naloxone, if I said that right, and. Use in the county building and training. For that, so Patrick does have to be on the agenda for that and then he is here with us today, so if I had to ask, if you want to come run up, sir?
Sure.
How are you?
Good, how you doing?
Good, yeah.
So, yeah, with public health, one of my roles is, you know, substance use and um. Dissemination of information and training people on how to use naloxone, naloxone for, if you don't recognize the name, it's uh. It's the medication that's in Narcan. Which is the more popular, is the brand, which is what people kind of recognizing and uh, know what that means, Cluxato is a new. Uh, brand, it's just got more of a naloxone in it. And so, when I was over um. At Human Services the other day, Alexis requested uh. To get some uh, more naloxone for the offices and then also to train. Of staff in the county building. Um, and then also I purchased. Uh, through uh, some grant funds, some of these opioid rescue kits, which are wall kits. Kind of similar to what you do with like an AED, uh, put them up next to those, doesn't have to be next to a AED, but. Um, somewhere where, somewhere where it's a public, yeah, where, you know, maybe someday we'll have, you know, public first aid kits and stop-the-lead kits and things like that. Um, and so this would be for, uh, it has a, a rescue breather in it for people who are just not breathing. Um, and then also some instructions and all that information, it's got the naloxone in it, um, to just open the case. Um, the other thing is a belt cord in there and you can administer the naloxone, which. Um, if you take one of my trainings, you'll learn that it is a uh, no harm type of medication and that there is. Protections on every aspect of it from the one who provides it and administers it to the person who supplies it and. Uh, and the person who has it in their facility, whether it's a business or a county or something like that. Um, and you can do no harm if you give it to someone who doesn't need it. Uh, and, and if you don't give it to someone who doesn't need it and, you know, lawsuits, you're protected. I can give you a list of those.
So you, you mentioned that, that's trained, how would we know when those trains are occurring?
Well, that would be up to whoever.
You give some training.
Yeah, yeah, I would provide it.
So who, who's the office that would sponsor this, that's really in schedule?
Yeah, I mean, who's, i- i- is there, is there someone within the department that would be, you know, in charge, I mean, I could do department by department by department.
Doing that.
Yeah. Yeah, I would be doing it on behalf of the public health.
Right, so, so maybe. It will be up to.
Each department had. Yeah, yeah.
With the. With one of the public health agency, you've got to coordinate you.
Yeah, oh, yeah, I was, I mean, I didn't even know that I would need to come up here, but I was talking with Alexis and Alexis said, might want to talk to commissioners first. Um for doing the training just.
You're he was trying to make us aware, or do you?
Yeah, I don't think we need permission for it, cause. It's it's just like a training, just like many others, if you were gonna give you a first day training.
Yeah, I disagree a little, I think you're going down the right route. You and or public health needs permission because you're talking about. Or utilizing hours out of some person's workday.
Yeah, right.
Right, so we can't just.
I'm saying, I didn't think it was something that we would. Not wanna do and. It it has to be coordinated.
So I'll work with um. Human Services since that was my initial contact and and work with them and see if. Uh if they want to communicate with the rest of uh. The office staff and and coming up with the time and 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 we can do multiple dates instead of try to get too many people all at once.
One kid per building or?
These kids, um it would be my uh original idea was to put this next to the uh A E D in the county building where you walk in where your old, you know. Commissioners' room was. Um these are like, you know, almost three hundred dollars. I mean, I could, I.
I- is this what the kit looks like? So my question is with it's sitting out in hallway. Uh of course, it will be. So my my question is then sitting out in the hallway and then all of a sudden we decide we didn't use the uh. The kit and then we go, we pop that door open on the kit, well, now we don't have an injector. We don't have a syringe or whatever it is in the kit. But that's missing because somebody has come along and taken that. It's not in a secure location. And the public isn't receiving the train on this, it would be defeat them in the courthouse. So that's my question, it. Should it be located there or should it be located, say? If we're only gonna have one in the department, probably that we might most likely need it. Uh or in a lo- a central location that's not necessarily. Accessible to all the public.
Um I mean, that that would be up to you, I think it should be accessible to all the public, especially visually, cause it helps not just if you're ever gonna need to use it, but if you. Never use it, just the sight of it and seeing it is gonna kind of normalize. The whole, you know, of of what that is, and that is actually something that's gonna be out there, there are seals on it, though, these are like.
Okay.
Um and with the school, cause I was trying to get to some schools as well, um and with kids, of course, thinking you're gonna, you know, they're gonna want some. You uh you don't wanna lock it, cause you can't get in, they do have some that are lockable, but you want quick, easy access, these are like pull ties that. Keep it shut, it'll it's tamper proof, so it's gonna take them quite a bit to get in there. But if you force it, you can just rip it right open, um and if it. I can also have a sign, I was gonna do this for the school, if I did it, um just saying, if you like some naloxone, please contact, you know, me with my number, cards, it's free.
So back to the process. Just because they requested, it doesn't mean that they're they should be in charge of how they get. All departments, I think that's the public health agency, you. You're the guy that that put it in all the county buildings, actually. You're gonna get serious about, right, there was a public access and star building. People come into the airport. Uh would be good to have, um so they could come off an airplane somehow. You know, need it. Or wherever, so. So wouldn't you then make it would be we some announcement of some kind, maybe through the public health agency says that you're gonna do the training. And here's the departments that and buildings that they should be in and and then we need a point of contact to uh work with you to. To get them in there, right, is that what you see the process mean?
Uh yeah, I mean, I was I was seeing it as a slower process than that to get uh that many into multiple buildings, I have so many.
Me as slow as it takes, but who's buying?
Uh these right now were purchased through a uh OD two A, which is the CDC grant, it's the overdose data to action grant. Um that grant is being run out by the end of August. Uh I have some funds uh through uh the settlement funds that could be used for those. Um we have about a little over three thousand dollars that is us to use for situations like that. That's about two seventy five plus shipping, so if you buy multiple.
Say it's three hundred bucks.
Three hundred.
Uh ten of those is three thousand bucks, uh how many do we need?
Uh well, I mean, I think it's a little unrealistic to have them in every single, well, maybe not, building, but. Um I mean, there's already a few up, I've got some for uh altitude, uh Ace Hardware and the library.
County buildings.
Yeah, for county buildings. Has one, yeah, we have one in public health. Here, will that be? Yeah, or the road and bridge um. Something like that, five, five, if you counted them all.
So would the intent here to be? Have these available so. The county personnel could administer them to the public?
To anybody, yeah, so I mean, if, you know, it's it's it's. It's not always like if someone uses, they're just gonna drop dead right there, wherever they start using, the pills and all these things, sometimes it'll take. A while for it to get into their system, so they can take a pill.
Be walking down our hallways.
Yeah, whatever it is, and then they're gonna drop and they're gonna go be unconscious and, you know.
Train all our employees and.
Yeah.
Would be smart otherwise.
Yep.
Well, when you and I talks, sorry.
Go ahead and then I'll ask my question.
You and I discussed this, I was thinking that. It's geared more towards use for the public. We're not gonna have employees go down on a opioid.
Maybe.
For the employees, it would be for the employees to be able to use. On the public.
Yeah, in general, yeah.
Know about search and rescue and.
Will we get public?
You know, if it's a public road and bridge and not a public, the airport would be, in my opinion.
So there there are also, like, you don't always have to have those up on the wall, those are more for, like you said, public, visual, you can see it. Um so I mean, I I work a lot in Fremont County as well, so a lot of people just have the the naloxone boxes. Uh in with their desk, um in in their own department that. Um you know, like grocery stores will have them in the uh customer service counter where only the employees know that it's there, so if they see someone go down like. Uh lows, they they will not, they won't even let me do a first aid kit over there. Um so, yeah.
I guess I've been there because uh. Because I think the conversation kind of went broader than you anticipated, so I'm gonna ask you. What's your vision actually was when you were coming here today, uh was it to place? When you did in this building over here at this time? Possibly to expand later or or what's your vision?
Possibly to expand, yeah, so right now I have four, three, three of them are accounted for and assuming that one. Would go in that county building wherever, I mean, ideally near that A E D. Um if not, you know, somewhere else that would be publicly visible uh in the hallway, something like that. Um and and we can ensure some sort of. Not security, but you know, tamper proofness on it.
So what do they have in the courtroom side, there's no issue in the A E D.
I don't know, is.
Is that, that's where a lot of the public goes and we don't see.
So, yeah, I don't know.
Maybe you need to.
Yeah, the intersection thing.
As long as they can see it, know it's there, it's sometimes they come in the other doors.
And you think training everybody or one person from each department or how would you?
I mean, anybody who has that access to the the naloxone, whether it be um. Uh you know, having a whole bunch of naloxone in your own, you know, desk in your office, uh for people who go.
Like me.
Visit.
If I'm walking over there and I see somebody drop, I'd like to then train.
Yeah.
It doesn't have to be that I have it in my.
Yeah, so I mean, this is, if you wanna require it for all county employees, um you could do that.
Uh how long's your training?
Oh, I I could make it fast and probably. Thirty minutes, well, I honestly, to just show you exactly, you know, how to use that, yeah, it takes about five minutes, but I put a little more. Explanation of what's behind it and and the whole fentanyl crisis and all that kind of stuff, like why it's so important right now.
So technically. Throwing this up to you, gentlemen, uh if he wanted to conduct his training, say. Uh between seven thirty and eight. When the employees are here, but not yet open for business, we could actually go by department. For two or three days, you know, to get that training in. Or between five and five thirty, that probably wouldn't work for your department, you'd probably be better off in the morning.
Well, and when we did the training for the A D Bs. It was like over a two day period and there was one in the morning or in the afternoon and. Everybody just, like my office, two people would go and.
Do it during the day.
Yeah, it didn't matter that it was during the day, cause it's not very long, so.
Yeah, was that A E D training required of all of them?
Uh I think we did make it required. Just so everybody knew how to use it.
And for all transparency, were these designed to be able to, anybody use them without any training?
Yeah, you don't need training, you don't have to have it or need it, it's got instructions right there in the front, kinds of symptoms to look for. And then it's got paper instructions on how to administer it, so you don't. Yeah, it's, it doesn't talk to you like the A Ds do, but it basically, you gotta read it, but.
I'm not trying to get around the.
It's not as important as just having these out there and, you know. Even just having the visual out there, I think would help with the stigma and just uh normalizing that. That these are out there.
So you said you'd have four. Three were accounted for, that means you have three already designated to go to certain case.
Yeah, and then actually, there's one, well, the clinic is up in the. Yeah, part of the Rockies, I'm I'm training them this month for all of their staff and I'm trying to get this up on their walls, but. It's a process.
So they wouldn't necessarily fix their own through part of the Rocky, that it would be something you would need to do there.
Yeah, yeah, they asked me to.
And so you have basically, you have at this time, unless additional funding comes through, you have one available.
Right now, for for the county.
Well, I would move we authorize Patrick to put that in county buildings.
And provide training uh. So I have a motion on the floor to uh allow Patrick with the. Uh public health to put the opioid opioid rescue kit in the county building. And provide training, uh discussion, I would ask first on discussion. Uh since we were talking, if we were going to make the training mandatory. Uh is that the intent of your?
It wasn't, I didn't include that, so we did have this discussion, but I don't think it's good either way. I think if we don't make a required training.
So.
It's the county courthouse building, it's not just the county bill.
Yeah.
So I would think that that would include the people. In the building, the across the street. And probably as well the people in this building, so that would include the three of us in H R finance uh. To your point, if you were walking, we we spend a lot of time over, so if we're walking in there, we need that training as well and uh.
So so it's making the training available, cause there's some cases, make it mandatory, then you're gonna have to hang around till everybody is sick or somebody missed it. I think it's just make the train training available. And it can be used without training, there's always gonna be somebody that probably hasn't.
Unlike CPR, you know, you don't get a card. A H A or something like that.
Again, if this is something you couldn't operate without it, then I'd be all.
Or or if you have liability, if you're not, not that kind of stuff, like there is.
I think part of that would depend on the department heads too, if they. Were on board with it, they would encourage your staff and provide the time for their staff to. And then I would say probably part of that then would be for you to maybe try to coordinate. Either with individual departments or. If you were to set up, say, two days worth of training uh. And with uh two or three times. And then. Be able to coordinate with the the di- different departments to make their staff available for that if they if they wanted to do that. You would get better participation, because if somebody feels like they can't leave for thirty minutes to to do it. If the department head is saying, hey, this is what we're doing, uh. We can make, we can rotate our staff to do this. And the participation, I think, would be greater.
Yeah, yeah. And and I think, you know, Human Services was was most interested because they do home visits and they go to, you know, people's homes and they wanna have it with them, they're gonna take a kit with. This, but the lock, that little box right there, yeah.
And that's being made available with them as well.
Yeah, yeah.
So so this is specifically just for the building, but they actually have. They have the.
They got the other little kids.
They have the Knox alone, if I'm saying that. Available to them. Or and would prefer to have training. And is that provided through uh public health or is that?
Public health, the the naloxone itself.
For them, just carry with them.
Yeah, so C D P H E provides us with a naloxone bulk fund. Um so it comes from the state and I get, you know, a couple hundred at a time.
You got a bunch over there.
Yeah, I just, well, yeah, I just ordered a hundred twenty more, doing about the twelve, so I just ordered and it'll be here. Uh it's two years, it used to, previously Narcan, it would say one year, but now it moved moved up to two years. There's protections though for expired, it's actually good for, they've tested uh forty year old naloxone, it's been out since the. Uh late sixties when when it came out and um. It's ninety percent effective af- after forty years, so I don't recommend it, but if it's expired, you can. Same same thing with if it's in your vehicle and it gets, you know, hot and it folds and it freezes and then it's like a hundred and twenty. Um not recommended, but it's you can still use it, it's got ninety percent efficacy. Which is all in the training, I'm good.
Those in favor then of allowing uh Patrick through the uh. Department of Health to place the opioid rescue kit in the uh county. Courthouse building and to provide training, which will be encouraged. Uh signify by saying hi.
Hi, hi. You know, maybe. We can see if Brown wanted to send out an email to encourage everybody. To do that, so it comes from public health or.
I go one step further and say, uh encourage anybody that wants one of those little boxes to ask.
Ask.
And that way, cause you're getting them anyway, yeah, make sure they know that's available.
And I will kind of take it's not necessarily a step back, but I didn't neglect to ask for any comment uh. Public comment on that, and I know we did have have no one here in the room, but we do have a couple people online. Uh so I would ask if anyone had comment on this. And I'm not seeing anything come up, so I wanted to give that opportunity. Thank you, I appreciate you coming in, that's a pretty good drive for you to come in, a lot better have this face to face.
I have to go back and I have to come back again, but, yeah.
Patrick, to a point where if. The average citizen comes up on somebody that's unconscious on the ground. This is the first practice without any obvious signs of trauma.
Yes, when I when I train, I say one in doubt, just use it, if you don't know if it's, you know, diabetic shock or whatever, it's not gonna mess with insulin or sugar, so. Yes, when, when I train, I say one in doubt, just use it, if you don't know, if it's, you know, diabetic shock or whatever, it's not gonna mess with insulin or sugar, so. Yeah, the thing is, is I've. Put out for a couple of years, a lot of, uh, uh, advertising and marketing that I do at the free, the training in the library community room. And I've only gotten a handful of people that ever show up. So that's when it was recommended, like. Yeah, it's like just go directly to the, to the business owners, you know, if people aren't showing up, then just go Ace Hardware and talk to Hope and be like, Hope. All your employees are gonna take this thing. And, and so that's kind of where it's going now, cause. I, I could put it in the newspapers and, and Facebook and everything and. People don't.
Processing.
Yeah, yeah.
Kind of nowhere's library and.
Yeah, we're good, how's everything else going? So she, I'm trying to stay on track like we talk.
Yeah, we have another meeting, uh, next week and then the Colorado Opioid Treatment Council, is a state meeting, uh, conference in Montrose is the sixteenth. And I'll be going and Cliff will be going. Um, yeah.
Okay, yeah, eighth, right?
The eighth is, um, our, our regional meeting.
Yes.
Between the border of our counties.
Yeah.
Yeah, the two for.
Yeah. Where's it at, do you remember?
It's online.
Oh, it's a zoomer?
Yes, it's.
Yeah, I've never signed up to go to the one over in Montrose, I thought I'd ask. One generation removed from needing that.
Not me, I think, um, Dwayne from Fremont. He, he said both, he's, he said that you will go and then you won't go, but he, he's, he's registered, so. I think he's gonna go.
Wow.
No. Well, she is a rep, she is our head person.
Yeah, exactly, I could see, I could see him going over. Myself, but. All right, sir, thank you.
Oh, then, yeah, let me know, cause I can.
And I can see your point of putting it over there, uh, by that AED.
Yeah.
My first thought was. Yeah, it's a little plastic box and then if we needed it, it may not be there, but with the, uh, with the safety seal on there, I think that's the good thing. And then if we notice the seal's broken, check out the inventory, so, appreciate that.
Yeah. Thank you. And then, um, yeah, like the one, like, leave, put the one up in public health, um, but yeah, someone, uh, maintenance guy or. All you need is a. Drill level, that's about it, dry. I'll figure that out.
I would. Maybe give it to, we can, and let him give it to Matthew.
Yeah, let me, uh, give it to.
Yeah.
I do actually have a whole separate new, or one of these that is just for showing off, but because I don't always put it in this, it's kind of scratched up. I don't want someone to put it up on the walls, yeah.
You wanna go put a little, that's where you want it. You could put a sticky like wall.
Maybe right above, I think right above the. I'm trying to think, is, it's like, isn't there a fire extinguisher or something near it?
There is one.
Yeah, so AED is like. I think this height, maybe, so if it's up here. As long as they're not less than five feet tall, you could probably reach it. Or do you go side by side?
I didn't say.
Take them side by side, maybe.
Yeah.
Good thing you didn't say it. I'm getting a little punchy listening, meeting number four in here in three days.
And they only have forty minutes during the meeting. All right, Patrick, thank you very much.
Yeah, no problem.
Yeah, great day, thanks.
Okay, uh. We have no other new business on the, uh, agenda, does, does anyone have any additional items of business at this time?
I do not.
Oh, that being the case, that will take us to public comment, if anyone has anything that they would like to. Bring up at this time, feel free to, uh, raise your hand if you're online. Seeing none, uh. I would adjourn this meeting at twelve twenty-one.